Start, start, start our meeting. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I'll make permission to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, anybody have anything to discuss on that? I do.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. The one piece that I wanted to ask about, if it's worded correctly in here about the groups, that's under whole business, says regarding the talk of moving the sixth grade from East Meadow to the high school, I'm not sure if that's correctly worded, or if it should be the groups to discuss options for what to do with the limited space. The way this word reads here, it sounds like we made a decision and...
All right.
So can we have that changed?
We should, yes.
Options?
Yeah. I just don't want it to read like we've decided that already because nothing has been decided. All right, was there anything else? Do we have to revise our... Oh, not a motion to...
Yeah, we have a first.
You have a second?
She's in second.
I did, yeah.
Okay. So, so all four?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, all against? All right. Then the next item, supposed to be the visitor section, but since there's so many visitors here, and I want to have, make sure we have ample time to do that, I think I'd like to get the student report first, just in case Marcus has to leave before we're finished.
He will not want to. It's gonna be a good one, Marcus, you might want to stay.
All right, we got a lot this time.
Yay!
Last week, the grades closed and progress reports went out to the students. Training active bystander has started, the people who train, this is an anti-bullying group, that teach other students in the school about some tactics and identifying things within a bullying situation. Our esports team has started. The focus groups for the sixth grade coming over has started with the students. Unified basketball, which is a basketball team for students with disabilities, get to have the opportunity to play basketball. Friday, the 18th, the high school is open to, for a walk-through, due to the request from people at the focus groups, asking for a high school tour. The 17th of October is the Special Olympics. There's a half-day this Friday, which is a professional development day, which will, which is related to the MAP testing.
Seventeenth, is it?
Yeah. The 18th, oh, the 17th is the Special Olympics.
Thank you.
The ninth grade is holding a fundraiser for the class to duct tape a teacher to the wall. So, we're gonna be, for all the volunteers of each teacher, we're gonna make a box, and then the students and teachers can drop, like, spare change or dollars into the box, and whoever gets the most money will get duct taped to the wall, and all the people who donate will get some pieces of tape to put them up there.
You're not gonna forget the teacher there, right?
Joe Drapo was nominated by Mrs. Stapleton, the art teacher, to go to a free art shop, where she stays overnight at, and the shop is called Snow Farm, and only one student gets to go. And I had the chance to attend the meeting, one of the focus groups, for the sixth grade going over to the high school.
Does anybody have any questions?
Marcus, do you know how many, how many students we have in the unified basketball team?
I don't know.
Okay. Do we have resume? Let me ask, as last year?
Ally knows.
Currently, we have six in discussions with Kathy Lutz, who's the director, for unified basketball. We're looking to pick up a couple more, just because we're a little short. We had one student withdraw his spot today on the team, and we're hoping to fill with Grammy students. If not, Kathy recommended to reach out to South Halley, because South Halley runs a track field one, and then we could partner with them for it.
Do you remember how many students we had last year?
Eight, nine.
It was a box.
Yep, yeah, definitely the same. Any more than you have that two teams.
Thanks.
Does anybody have anything else they want to ask Marcus while he's here?
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
As always, feel free to stay as long as you want. But then the next item is for the visitors' comments. I think there's a few, a few things first. Those that wish to speak have to sign, sign up, so if you haven't signed up and do wish to speak, please, I guess, I'll leave this over here. A couple things, though. First of all, is anybody here to discuss anything besides the focus groups? I didn't think so, but I thought I would ask, and maybe we could kind of start there. Oh, back there.
I just wanted to provide the council with a recent advisory council update, kind of like after everything is over. So, I'm just gonna create a slide, but I can, once everybody's done, I can give the committee their, um, probably good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I just want to start, make sure everybody understands, nothing's been decided. There hasn't been anything brought to us as a, a group to vote on, to be decided. And I believe all of our discussions and decisions will be in line with our strategic goals, which are, I have a copy here, and are out on the school that we... I think what we should try to do tonight, and I know some people might be a little upset and mad, or have some strong opinions, I think, I think it's best if we try to just do what we ask our kids to do, be respectful, be open-minded, and look forward, and not backwards. Right? So, can I have that list back, just so I can ask? Wayne?
I'll pass.
You'll pass? Gabe?
Come up or stand?
Whatever you're most comfortable with.
Sure. Well, I'm being cool, everybody, fifty more last week. So, I've been to a lot of focus meetings, or a lot of focus meetings, I would say, so I think you've got some of the emotion out there, or maybe even social media, but today I just wanted to read a study, spend my three minutes here that I have, just reading about a Duke University study. And before I get to that, I just want to first thank all the school committee for, you know, the thankless hours that you guys put in, for our children's better. So, with that being said, I just want to read this quick study in a couple minutes, and let somebody else speak. I took this study, it came from publicschoolreview.com. It starts off saying, "Sixth graders in middle school have more behavioral problems than peers in elementary school. In a highly regarded 2000 study, public school students in North Carolina and a group of Duke University, Terry Sanford Institute of Public Policy, looked at behavior to evaluate whether sixth graders were better off in an elementary school or middle school." I just want to note that they, they don't even go to the point, to address putting them in a high school. So, get back to the article. "After appropriate adjustments, the socioeconomic and demographic factors, the studies showed that sixth graders attending elementary school were less likely to have discipline problems than their middle school counterparts. Moreover, the discrepancy in discipline problems continued through the eighth and ninth grades. Studies have shown that disciplinary problems corresponded to low academic achievement. Sixth graders in elementary school test higher than those that are in middle school. The Duke study also considered test scores. Researchers found that sixth graders in elementary school scored higher than their peers in the middle school on standardized and area tests. A recent study in Philadelphia's school system concurred with the new study. According to the school superintendent, Paul Dallas, the study showed that sixth graders in the elementary school performed better on standardized tests than those in the middle schools. In response, Philadelphia reduced the number of their middle schools from forty-six to eight, and placing sixth graders in the elementary school. Sixth graders in middle school are exposed to older teens, which may have negative, negative influence on them. They seem, they've been exposed to alcohol a lot more in life. Children in sixth grade are at a point in their lives where they're easily influenced by their fears, and keeping sixth graders in the elementary school gives them that other, that treat gear matured, and be exposed to, you know..." So, that's, that's really, I thought this study meant a lot to me, I think it's pretty factual, and that's why I'm here, just to say I strongly oppose a sixth grade moving to the high school. Okay? I think there's just other, there's other things we can look at that could be far better if we go to the town. And lastly, I just want to say, it's really shocking to believe that within one year of being in school, one year in a month, they're already here at this point in max capacity, so I feel like something went wrong with the planning of the numbers. But, and lastly, sorry, I just want to say, the vote was PK or K to six. The town really pushed for this, gave it their all, paying high taxes, so does everybody, for this to happen, and it's wonderful, and I just really want to stick to the original plan. So, thank you, Bill, and you speak to them, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think you were next.
Yeah, oh, okay. I didn't really come with anything prepared, but I will echo what Gabe has stated, and I have, listening to this, it actually, it reemphasizes the way, you know, there's been challenges grades today, and my daughter happens to be in one of them, where there are some, and I'm, you know, I'm not gonna say more than that, because I think everyone here knows that there are some situations that have been challenging for, for students here. And if they're to move over there, I'm really afraid that there's the opportunity for them to get lost in, in the frame. And I know that there have been other schools who have been grade six through eight, but I don't know how large those schools were, and how great that opportunity really is gonna be for the sixth graders to really be able to benefit from that type of move. I toe them against it, I have a daughter who would clearly be impacted by this, and I do think that there are other options, and I just hope that the options are not, are not negated because of cost, because that would be really devastating if we couldn't move a pre-K into the high school solely because of a financial decision.
Thank you.
I'll pass.
You'll pass? JR?
I, I'm JR Goldsmith, I have two, two children in the kindergarten and second grade, resident for nineteen years. You know, I, I went to a couple of focus groups, and you've seen these numbers, I mean, I'm a, I'm a real estate developer, you know, when I, when I go into buildings that are a hundred thousand square feet, a hundred fifty thousand square feet, and I do a build out of, you know, I know what I'm getting, I know what I have to put into, okay? Am I getting, you know, forty commercial spaces and sixty apartments, you know, vice versa, whatever, okay? Five years later, it's not gonna change. So, when I come here, and, you know, you have thirty-nine thousand square feet of, of building there, that, you know, was proposed to be built for a pre-K assessment, you know, I, I feel that, you know, this building is being used wrong, okay? You have four hundred and, hold on, I wrote this down, you have four hundred and thirteen students in a building that was built for four hundred and fifty. Why are you short on classrooms? You, you know, and then it goes back to, this school wasn't built for pre-K. Well, if it wasn't built for the pre-K classrooms, then why is there two pre-K classrooms in this building to begin with? If it was built just for kindergarten or second. You know, with some research that I've done, and saw two-hundred-and-sixty-two pages of your architects, your engineers, and read every single word of them, you're using space in this building for what it was not meant to be used for. You were supposed to have a music room that was part of the gymnasium on the stage, but then they changed it to a band, so now you have a dedicated music room. You know, I, so, I, I think you have enough space, I just think it's not, it's just somebody's not using it correctly. If you knew these numbers five years ago, and you still built this building, and charged the taxpayers seven point seven percent to raise the taxes here, and I pay a lot of money in taxes, and I'm, and I'm all for it, voted for it, everything, but give, give the taxpayers in the town what they voted for. You know, if they had to raise it to eight point one percent, or seven point nine percent, to get those two, I guess, dedicated classrooms that y'all need for, for pre-K done, that's what it shouldn't have done. You know, I also saw, in, in everything that I was reading, that, you know, this school came three million dollars under budget, okay? So, you use thirty-seven million dollars of this out of budget that was forty million. That's what I read in black and white, okay? So, just, if, if that number's an error, I mean, that, that's what I read. What'd you do with the three million? Where'd it go? And, and nobody seems to want to say that answer. And then I heard it went to technology. But me being a, but, and that's fine, you shake your head, I, I mean, like I said, I don't know where it went, but I'm just saying, to add the two classrooms that, that you needed, I was told that they were deleted because you had to pay a hundred percent of the cost at the initial build, then I was told that was incorrect. So, it's like I'm getting a lot of confusing and conflicting answers here, irregardless of, of where the money went, and where the money didn't go, didn't go back to the taxpayers, didn't go down to the state. I'm sure you can answer all those questions. I'm sure you're not gonna do it tonight, I'm not asking you to do it tonight, but I just think that if you built a school for four hundred and fifty children, and you have four hundred, as of right now, this enrollment's four hundred and thirteen, somebody's doing something wrong with this space, you know, and, and, and I'm not here to point fingers or blame names, and I appreciate everything that you do, because, you know, it's a thankless job, I'm on a lot of committees here, in the Virgin Islands, and everywhere else, and, you know, it's a very thankless job, and I get it, but moving the sixth grade at this age, like, my eleven-year-old, I, I don't want her in the high school. You know, I mean, the vice, the principal of the high school is here at the first focus group meeting, and he said, "We do everything that we could do, our best, to keep them separate," but, he's like, "It's, it's not perfect." You know, they'll have to get on the bus an hour earlier, you know, they, they'll go to lack sleep, I mean, if you look at all the studies and everything like that, I just don't think that's the right answer to move a sixth grade, and, you know, if that's what it's gonna be, now I'm gonna take my children out of school, and now I'm gonna pay for private school, and now they're gonna lose their friends, and then it just snowballs down and downward. But anyways, that's my time, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Kimber and I'm a Goldsmith. I was born and raised in Granby. I'm the mom of two children, Kirk, who's in East Meadow, and also a taxpayer. I contacted the superintendent's secretary to be added to the agenda. I was told I could speak as a visitor for three minutes, so I wrote everything down, so in my short three minutes, nothing was missed. The purpose of the school committee, according to your website, has the dual responsibility for implementing statutory requirements pertaining to public education and local citizens' expectations for the education of the community's youth. It also has an obligation to determine and assess citizens' desires. I'm speaking tonight because I feel the issue with the school isn't a capacity issue, it's a management issue. I'm disappointed the school has been aware of this for years, and it's just reaching out to parents now. I'm disappointed it was always a plan to just move the sixth grade, as Mr. Latell stated in several focus groups. I'm disappointed there's been no research done in any other avenues. I'm disappointed the fifth grade children we spoke to yesterday promised phones on their bus, longer recess, and after-school activities. I'm disappointed teachers were asked not to sign a petition, or were allowed to come tonight to speak about this important issue, especially since many are parents of children in the Granby school system and taxpayers. I'm personally tired of the school using scare tactics, saying they don't have money to run programs. Sports were threatened in the high school, and yet they have a gaming sport this year. Seventh grade families were told their kids would be separated from the ninth graders, however, there's a seventh to ninth grade dance coming up. In limited time, a, a couple friends and I have collected a hundred and seventy-seven signatures from families of schoolchildren and taxpayers that do not want the sixth grade moved. We started collecting them because families were unable to come to focus groups, but still wanted to be heard. Many residents in Granby were unaware of the focus groups, only families with children in the school system were notified. Not only asking the school committee to give the taxpayers what they voted for, a pre-K to six, but also asking the school, to give the, I'm sorry, not only asking the school committee to give the taxpayers what they voted for, a pre-K to six, but also asking the school committee for transparency. For the town to build a school, and then have the school say it's not big enough, there's obviously a problem here, especially when the school was built for four hundred and thirty plus twenty pre-K, and we are currently at four hundred and thirteen students. The school is clearly not the building, using the building for what it was built for. School choice is being used to add classrooms instead of to fill classrooms. As a taxpayer, I clearly voted for a pre-K through six school, joining of East Meadow and West Street. When the building was designed, school choice was not taken into account, one pre-K room was. There was also an art room and a music area built. Since we have moved into the new building, staff has significantly increased. Fourteen children of school choice into just one grade, that's almost an entire classroom. I'm also aware of a pre-K student that was school choice, and for a teacher that has now maxed us out in our space for that program. So, I'm also speaking tonight to ask the school committee for transparency in regards to the budget. At the last focus group, Emery was very clear about not wanting to discuss the budget. I'm not sure how we as taxpayers can trust our school, especially after this issue, to make appropriate decisions without seeing an itemized budget. Emery said the budget had nothing to do with the capacity issue, when in fact, it has everything to do with it. It is obvious the school choice money is preferred by the school department, as it can be allocated any way the school chooses. In retrospect, the school could come to the taxpayers asking for money, while essentially they in fact have the money. I just feel that, you know, we are totally backward on this. I feel, we're going through every focus group, I went to all four focus groups, and the main intent was always about moving sixth grade, moving sixth grade, there's no studies on preschools and any other high schools, there's no studies on anything else, there's no budget saying, "We have money to do this, we don't have money to do that." There was no cost made up of how much these temporary classrooms would cost, or if we added them onto the school. Nothing is else, is being looked at, except for moving a sixth grade into the high school. And I understand that you guys have known this for a while, but we haven't, and I, I don't think that it's fair, that this is the only decision being made.
What makes you believe that we, we know about this for a while?
Mr. LaToi, Mr. LaToi? He said that you guys have known about this for over five years.
Who's you guys? Who, you're talking about the school committee, or some other folks?
Whoever was, you guys were all involved in designing the school, building the committee.
See, I think the issue that we're having, I really appreciate that you guys expressing your opinions, but the one thing that I don't appreciate is that we're making decisions based on miscommunication or complete disinformation. And we try to be, and I also take exception to your, to your comment about transparency, we try to be as transparent as possible, and we've been for years. So, every, every meeting is taped, we cannot speak outside these, these rooms, we have to share everything here, discuss everything here, make decisions here. By the way, if we don't do it, then we get sued. So, never, ever did we discuss anything related to this topic at a school committee. That's the reason why we're having all these conversations, so we can organize and schedule and do the focus groups, and then we can have a better conversation. We don't know anything more than you do, except for those of us who were on the school building committee. And, you know, Jim and I are the only members of the school building committee, which is completely different than the school committee. So, the school committee has nothing to do with the building, or the structure, or decisions made around the building. But what really gets me is that we are having these conversations based on wrong information, and that doesn't help anyone, it doesn't help us certainly, but it doesn't help you folks either, because we are really exchanging thoughts based on what is not correct. For instance, we're talking about four fifty, even if you go to the MSBA website, you see that it was planned for four thirty. It is true that there was going to be a pre-K, but it's, as you heard the superintendent, or you probably heard it from the school committee, school building committee chair, Mark Bale, that at the time, this was the best decision that that school building committee was able to make, for what it's worth. It's bad, it's good, based on what was available to us as information, this was the decision. So, in two years, suddenly we have forty students, we're happy, but there are challenges that come with them. So, you know, you're making a good point, it should be planned, absolutely, it should be planned ahead, there should be plenty of space, but when you look at the number of classrooms that were planned, without actually consideration for pre-K, which at the time, you know, we were able to fit every student in this building, and suddenly we are looking for space because we have forty more students. When you allocate two of those classes to pre-K students who are Granby residents, then we are basically looking for space to make up for those two classrooms, and that was, that was a challenge. The other thing that I, hopefully I'm not taking too much. The other thing I want to address is the assertion that there is only one, one option, and the solution was already decided upon. I can guarantee you, if there was such a thing, which there wasn't, none of the members of this committee would, would, would agree to that. We always try to hear every perspective, I understand you were not, you were not happy that, you know, fifth graders had a focus group, I, I understand, it was fifth through twelfth grade, everybody. It was because of our promise that we were gonna hear everybody in the school committee. I mean, some of the things that you guys are sharing, we may disagree, but it's a good thing. Disagreements actually help us get to a better place, get us to better understand what your needs are, what your perspectives are. But just because we are having these conversations, it never meant that a decision was made, and we were really moving along to push something, shove something, without your input. So, I want to make sure that I clarify that, hopefully on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you.
No, I, I just, I feel differently. I understand the position that you're in, but being in the position that I'm in, I just feel differently. You didn't go to all four focus groups. I sat with different people at every group, I did tours with different people through every tour, and you get a vibe from everyone, you can't say that you don't, you know, you, people were very clear about, "This has been thought of for a very long time." Not that moving preschool was thought of, or anything like that, that this has been thought of for a very long time. And it's something that, if you guys did know it when the vote was taking place, it wasn't your job as a town to make up that decision for us, because then why on the ballot did it say specifically putting rates? I guess you guys should have let that out then, and then it would have been a little more transparent. And then I wouldn't be expecting that, but as a taxpayer, I voted for a pre-K through six school, and if at any point I had known that was gonna be different, I would have not voted the way that I did.
Do you mind? So, I, I genuinely see your point, and I'm thinking to myself, I don't even have children in the school district. I don't know what I would have thought, I would have said, if I had a child that was about to go to sixth grade, and we were having these conversations. I honestly don't know. Probably I would have done the same thing that we are doing right now, listen to all the different opinions, ask people who I trust, you know, what their suggestions are, read certain things that, you know, I can read to form an opinion. But I don't, I don't know, because I don't have a child who will go to sixth grade, and who potentially could move to another school building, and I can appreciate all those concerns. But what I want to, what I want to tell you is that, even though I don't have children in the school district, my promise was that I, I would do everything possible to make sure that these children were taken care of first, and that didn't change just because I don't have children in the school district. So, that is, I think that is still our, our promise, that we are looking at these options that way. And I will tell you this, there are four, four options that were discussed, there are many more than four. I mean, there, they, they all came up, right? Just you guys suggested some nice things, different things that we did not even think about. In fact, I'm saying "we," but, you know, we did not even have this conversation, more may come up, as we're discussing these things at the school committee, at our school committee meeting. So, 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 if, if we can do two things, one is if we can hear each other out, two, if we can make sure that we have the best information possible to make the decision, at the end, obviously, you know, we're gonna reach a decision. At the end, obviously, you know, we're gonna reach a decision whether, you know, it's to anyone's liking, we'll find out. But we have no final decision made. The first decision, the first option is as good as the fourth one to me, or the tenth one that may come up. I'm still trying to educate myself as far as what you folks are saying, what we will be discussing, and what we'll find out as we do the research. So I know we're not always, we don't always think that the other side is saying the right things or sharing the right information, but if we can start at least with that, it would help all of us to have a better conversation.
Okay, next question. Next question.
Sure.
In the original building structure that I saw, okay, there was two classrooms off that east way, okay, that were deleted. Okay? Right? Were you agreeing, were you agreeing on that?
I don't remember what we deleted, honestly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, when I did tour, your superintendent said these two classrooms were gonna be right here, and it's where the, it's where the pre-K playground is. And that, those were the two classrooms that were taken off, in, in the original building design that you had. And I think those two classrooms were taken off for one reason. And later come to find out, I guess it's because the grant money, and, and I don't work with the state before the state, or, you know, I mean, the Ninjas all privately funded. That was taken off because it was gonna cost, I guess, grandity or the taxpayer a hundred percent to do those rooms, because the state doesn't fund for pre-K. So, those were taken off. And at that point, with those taken off, you guys moved forward, still with a, a vote for a pre-K, it was a sixth grade school. I, I just wonder if I'm correct on that?
You, you aren't correct.
Okay, so if I'm correct on that, then how, and you took those two classrooms out, how could you say that we're gonna have a pre-K through sixth grade school? You didn't have the two classrooms that you needed. Thus, we're, we're sitting in this position right now, minus two classrooms. So, so, so am I wrong in saying that? This all went down, and this, everything, and all the engineers came around, and everybody sat around a round table, not the school committee, the building committee, which apparently you were on, I didn't realize that. You knew that we're gonna delete these two, but we're still gonna, we're still gonna get, we're still gonna tell the taxpayers of Grand B that you're voting on a school that can hold pre-K to sixth grade. And you very well knew you deleted two classrooms. So, I, 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 I don't know how, at that point, shouldn't you have said the vote should be kindergarten through six? Because we deleted these? Or am I, am I missing something there? Maybe I am.
So I can't entertain that myself, because that wasn't a school committee, you know, job. We didn't, you know, as a school committee, have anything, but if Emery wants to try to take that.
All I can say is that, I don't know about the two classrooms.
I saw the, I, I saw the blueprints. There's two hundred and sixty pages of it, they were on there.
Okay.
Then they got deleted.
So, I know that this footprint is smaller than what it was originally. I don't know whether we translated to those five. So let's just, and what you're saying is, is, you know, is good, and for, for today, it makes sense, right? Because we're looking at two grades that have two classrooms, so if you try to squeeze all the kids from next year into two classrooms, we have more than we would like to have in a classroom. But look at our enrollment in elementary school a couple of years ago. Look at what was mentioned in the feasibility study, that said you will not see, you know, Western Mass is declining, you will not see the increases that you, right?
But you guys want to keep your classroom size down too, so you only want twenty kids per class.
Twenty some, twenty some. No, that's a twenty.
Twenty to twenty-two.
Actually, that's something that is decided, based on the suggestion of the administrative team, and then we.
Right, so, so instead of going up to twenty-eight, or thirty, or twenty-nine, you know, whatever the case may be, maybe for some more room. But, like I said, this all comes back to, okay, two classrooms are deleted, okay, fine. Okay? But, but this building is, I mean, you must know that this building is being misused. There's rooms here that are being misused. I mean, if you want me to bring in blueprints, I mean, I read blueprints every day in my life, I mean, you know, you know, you can, you can see these right here, I mean, you know, I can blow them up, and I mean, we could sit down and have some coffee and a doughnut and go, well, here's what you did. But now you're using this rooms, some rooms, for not what you, what the proposed bill was for. And, and it was changed. Now, you might have changed it, and like I said, I'm not saying the school committee, I know, you know the difference, but I know you're, now I know that you're on two boards. So, you changed it, and you labeled it, and your engineers labeled it, and everybody down the line signed off on it. But now, it's changed. And now, you're short two classrooms. And I think that if you look at the original blueprint, and I mean, I know you will, that's what I looked at, you can catch those two classrooms that you need and solve this issue.
So JR, for what it's worth, my original training is as a civil engineer, so I love blueprints, we can take a look at everything, just do that.
And you love color.
And I never practiced it, by the way. So, hold on one second. The, uh.
[laughing].
The, the thing is.
Three minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The blueprint that.
Jim, we're gonna run over a little bit tonight, don't worry.
The blueprint that we voted on, first of all, I mean, we don't really, as a committee, school building committee, don't have anything to do with the labeling and the location. Architects do that, professionals do that, we don't. But the blueprint that we voted on, all of us, right? At the town meeting, is the blueprint that you are seeing today. So it's not like it was changed, except for maybe shifting the use of some smaller ones.
Okay, so that's the blueprint that I saw from your architect. Two hundred and sixty-two pages, when they literally went to the bathroom, they labeled it, we went to the bathroom. I mean, they, they're very good at what they do, and everything is written down to the spec.
What I'm saying is that we all voted for that blueprint that the architects put in front of us, all of us.
Okay. The, the, the school committee voted for it?
No, we, we, as a town, voted for the blueprint, because it was shared with the town, right? At the time, so everybody had access to it. So what I'm saying is that, it's not like something was done, and suddenly something was squeezed in front of the town with changed or shifted rooms. We all voted for that same, same plan.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree to disagree on it. I, I think the plan that we voted on changed. And, and, and I'm almost a hundred percent positive.
It may have, I'm not saying that it, it, certain uses did not change. We all voted for whatever those architects put in front of us. So whatever you're seeing.
Right.
I don't know which version you are seeing, but, you know, the small rooms used may have shifted.
Right.
But as far as I recall, the classrooms were labeled as such in the plan that was put in front of the town.
Okay. I, I, and you went right. And I'll, and I'll.
And I may not be, just, I don't, I'm speaking from, from Emery as well, but yeah.
I'll go back and confirm, you know, but I'm just saying, on the plan that I saw, that I thought that we voted on, we had plenty of space. This shouldn't have been an issue, and I think, like I said, I think somehow, some way, with these green rooms and other rooms, and, you know, every other little, you know, idiosyncrasy that you had to do to get the funding, and I get it, you know what I mean? And, and that's fine. I think a lot that some things got a little bit skewed. And, you know, and now school choice comes in and has a whole nother, it's not backwards that I would get into, but, you know, I mean, I just think, I, I wanna go with it and just confirm, and you can have another discussion.
See?
I apologize, Jim.
That's fine. Being on the school building committee, you're, you're correct. There were, I see a lot of confusion over pre-K through six or K through six. It was a pre-K through six school. We, the diagrams you looked at, and probably the ones that were up in the, the town, the gym when you were voted, that's what it was. And, and there were classrooms for pre-K, one, two, three, four, five, you know, and we knew at that point, as just jumping ahead, even though we had the enrollment figures, that we as a school building committee, I'm just speaking for myself, I've spent a lot of time here, but looking at now, the changes that, there'd be enough for classrooms here, realizing that sometimes there are maybe more kids in grade one, less kids in grade four. Always thinking, at least we thought long-term, there'd be enough for flexibility that you might have to move some classrooms. This won't be a second grade room forever, it could be a third grade room next year, vice versa, and same thing up the line. So, we, again, I think as taxpayers and school committee, or school building committee, knew that there'd be some flexibility here possibly, but we really thought that for the foreseeable future, it would not have been an issue. That we shouldn't, shouldn't have run into this issue this quickly. So is, it is sort of a surprise, and it's not that, I don't think people are misusing the rooms, it's just that maybe we gotta look at it more carefully. Administration might have do that, we have to maybe do that.
Will you guys go out two years and do a study on two years of, of how many homes will be built, you know, that built in two thousand sixteen, seventeen? Population of the town, who's moving in, what, what kids are going up? I mean, at the focus group meeting, and she's, you know, Cheryl said that, you know, you went back three years. I don't know how you go back, you know, forecast for three years, I don't know, you can come up with three years, I can figure.
Well, I think we had, we'd always conversed with the planning board, and the planning board, we knew that there were no big projects going on in terms of, maybe there's gonna be one out here, extension, but there were no big projects, so we knew there wasn't gonna be a development in process.
Right.
In, you know, a new neighborhood that we weren't aware of. And we, sometimes you cannot predict who's, who's moving in town.
But you didn't think, who owns our first sale?
Right.
And figure out, okay, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two percent of that's gonna.
Right, but I think, but I think we knew at that point, there wasn't gonna be a major flux going on.
Okay.
Sometimes you can't predict, the other thing that I think, people talk about school choice, but sometimes, four, five, six years ago, we were losing kids. We were, kids were leaving our community. Now, it's good that they are coming back, sometimes you cannot predict that. That a Grand B student leaves out, and he comes back to Grand B, which is good, and so I'm sure some of those numbers played into the game too.
But what did you figure, you know, building a forty million dollar, or thirty-seven million dollar, or however much this costs, new school, you're gonna get school choice kids because now you got this facility?
Right, but I think.
And shouldn't, and shouldn't you have capped that?
I wasn't on the committee then, but I, I, I'm sure those who were here and administration were looking at that very carefully, and like we used to saying, no kids in this grade, no kids in this grade, because, so, and I'm sure that was done.
Well, I was told that there was no school choice kids in, in preschool.
Again, I don't know that.
The superintendent, that there was zero kids, school choice or preschool. I left that meeting three hours later, I found out there was one.
Yeah, I don't know about that, so.
Which, which meeting, JR?
The, the first focus group on Monday morning.
Yeah, it's probably someone misunderstood something, because in the presentation itself, it says one student.
Oh, right?
Yeah, preschool.
Because I was told zero.
It's because, I heard it that way, I asked specifically that there was one on the presentation, and, you know, it's.
But shouldn't we cap the school choice? I mean, it, it's not that I'm against school choice. What I'm against is, is you build forty million dollars, you raise everybody's taxes up seven point seven percent, okay? Now, that was a decision, I guess you came up with that number, just because you had to get a pass, and maybe if you hit eight, you wouldn't get the votes from the taxpayers, you know, to just build anything. And maybe you put it in eight point one, and then you got, yeah, it's like fifteen rooms. I don't know. You, you, you know what I mean? I just think that, you know, a lot of people are here, a lot of people are angry, you know, and, have I got to like it? No. I mean, but do I have the means? I mean, my kids can go to private school, I went to Overhand Munson, I went to private school from kindergarten through six, Overhand Munson, and then, you know, Quiddity College, which is now a university, you know, for, for the rest, okay? But I, I just think that, as a taxpayer, that, you know, kinda, you know, what happened here is leaving a lot of bad taste in a lot of people's mental, and a lot of people like, I don't want my eleven-year-old daughter when she turns eleven, I don't want her to be in the high school, because I know very well that, you know, and, and it's not just my daughter, I don't want my eleven-year-old son to be there. I don't want him to see things. And with technology, you know, when we grew up, when we were young, it was a little different, right? You know, I mean, even, you know, I mean, it was a lot different. You know, now with technology and everything like that, I mean, it's scary for kids that are in sixth, and I know a lot of seventh graders, you know, friends who know that up in town, and everything like that, and their daughters hate me, and they're so.
So, oh, thank you for that. Over, I just wanna make sure that we, we correct one more thing, because I know that when we talk about money, multiple things come into play and they get confused. The three million dollar or so under budget that you mentioned, first of all, our budget as a school has nothing to do with the building budget. So those are completely different things. The three million dollars that you're talking about is not really money that anyone in this town touched, that was money that was gonna be borrowed, that ended up not being borrowed. So it's not something that, you know, we really physically were able to say.
So you bring up the three million.
So, so we did not, we did not, not borrowing.
Right, you didn't end up borrowing.
Right, so the town basically saved three million dollars. It wasn't really three million dollars that was available sitting there that, you know, that somebody.
So you never, you never borrowed? You borrowed every penny, to the penny of what accounts for the building?
No. We borrowed whatever was necessary in the steps that the town decided were gonna do. We have nothing to do with borrowing, the school building committee has nothing to do with borrowing. Folks who know what they're doing, they just go do municipal borrowing.
Yeah.
And when they did that, they borrow in phases. For the last phase, where they were going to go out and borrow something to the tune of close to three million dollars, I don't know the exact amount, my understanding, we did not need to borrow that, so it is really money saved for the town that we did not need to borrow. So there's no additional increases to the taxes, to town taxes, that's my understanding.
It's not sitting in an accounting.
It's not sitting in an accounting, no. You can, you can ask, you can ask Chris, and he will.
See another, so you took three million dollars, and, and, and I can't remember who sent it, but, you know, said that three million dollars went to technology.
Well, here's the thing, so just, you know, let's just, since other.
Couldn't spend three million dollars.
You folks that are watching, let us clarify that too.
Yeah.
Because we heard that, we heard that there was this huge surplus that is stashed out somewhere and all that. So, a couple of things about our budget. Last year, we did have a surplus, or money that, you know, that wasn't spent in our budget at the end of the year. The whole thing is spent on technology, that is true. So that basically went for the notebooks and other technology that, you know, our children are using in this school district. Pardon me?
How much was it?
I don't know.
It was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars or so, in all the budget presentations, that number was.
So that's the other thing that I wanted to mention.
One thirty-nine and change.
That number, we can't really, we can't stash away money and not be, not, not share with the, with the town or anything like that. Anything that is in the school budget, if it's not spent, just, you know, it, it has to go somewhere. So we spent that money for whatever already was planned as technology expenditure, so that's, that's one thing. And, and a final note on the school choice issue that, or topic that Jim brought up. I think folks heard that we are receiving money when students come to our district. We're also sending out money when our students go to other districts as, as school choice students. So whatever's the net, that net, and I, somebody brought to my attention that, you know, I'm not on Facebook or anything like that, so I have to have somebody share it with me. That, that money was somewhere, and, you know, that is being used for different purposes. We actually have been using our school choice money to replenish our budget for years now. If we get to the point where our school choice net is so much that we don't have to do that, all good, we can all celebrate and do different things with it. We're not there yet, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So just, again, I'm gonna move forward. I think the topic here, to take away here, that we can move forward with is looking at the blueprints to see if maybe some space isn't utilized the way it could be utilized, is that, is that correct? I hate to sum all that into one sentence, but.
No, you did it right.
[laughing].
I mean, that's just the bottom line, right?
Yeah.
Bottom line is, let's see where this is gonna be utilized, because in the blueprints it shows different things. Like a music room shouldn't be, the music room, it should be up in, you know, the gym area.
Those are the, those are, yeah, that was the instrumental music was on the stage.
They said it was the bands, but that.
Band instrumental was there, music was at the library, that was always the plan.
That was the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so you, so you built a music room.
Yeah. The music room is Mr. Wallace's room.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Then I, I also wanted to state that I too have a son that will be impacted by whatever decision is, is made. So, there are, there are other people on the board too who have kids.
Oh, I, I'm not, listen.
I have a daughter that's in fifth grade.
Listen, I'm not saying that anyone of you have already made up your mind. I think that, like I said, I mean, y'all are incredible, world, being on a board, I admire many of them, okay? And it's a thankless job, and it's, uh, many hours. I mean, I'm on, I'm on a board of directors of the U.S. Virgin Islands, and two category five hurricanes took out our home, um, and plus our resort, to the tune of $96 million to recover, okay? So, you know, trying to do this, you know, I mean, it was a long process, you know, since 2017. So, I, again, I'm not saying that you guys have already made up your mind.
Absolutely haven't.
You know, we have, you know, we just wanted to come here tonight and share with you, you know, our thoughts in, you know, in, in being transparent, and being open, you know, feedback, and going back and forth. I mean, this is what makes a world's work, and this is, you know, how we get things done. I mean, you know, I mean, I don't think anybody's here to fight, argue. I think it's just, you know, just voice our opinions, you know, show you, and, you know, like I said, I, I, I didn't even think that you were going to respond, so I thought I had three minutes.
I didn't, I didn't think we were going to respond.
Yeah, no, I, I did, I mean, I think that it's, it's great that you offered.
I also, I also just want to state that I would be very upset if not every option was, was really looked at before a recommendation was brought forward to us to vote on. That, that would be very upsetting to me, to be asked to vote on something that, that really wasn't well thought out in all directions. I think you want to read it?
So, I just wanted to ask, so what are the next steps? And are you going to show exactly, or are there only four options? Because I know in the focus group I attended, we had far more than four. And how, so what is the next step for you to take the information from those focus groups? Do you take, and is it going to be shown tonight what is being presented?
That, that is actually part of the, part of tonight's meeting. We're going to go through, I guess, a, a big package of what the four groups discuss. As far as next steps, I believe at this point, the, the leadership team is going to go back and look through this. We'll probably have some things that we're going to ask them to look into based on some of the things that come up tonight. And then I, I believe the next steps after that will be talked about later tonight also. So, it's not all etched in stone just yet, it's kind of, we're just kind of working through this as best we can with as many of you that want to be, be on board as we go through this.
And when you vote on this, is the vote open to the public like this, or maybe?
Everything, everything we do is open to the public.
Right, is open, right? So, whatever you do, when you vote, I can sit right here and see how each one of you vote here, right?
Or, or you can watch it on YouTube.
Yeah.
All right, I guess I have a couple more. Seamus?
Uh, yes, I agree with Kim, Gabe, Stephanie, and.
JR.
And JR. Um, I, I was once in sixth grade, I am from a long time ago, because it was 2002, I was leaving East Meadow. I was very nervous of going to GHS. As hard as that is for you guys to believe, I was. I think some of you can recall that. And I was very, very nervous, uh, my first two weeks, uh, my first two weeks, I was, you know what I mean, I was in a respect, I had anxiety. I didn't even want to do that, but then I got used to it. And that is something that you, it's, it's, and that was 2002. And like Gabe had said, sixth graders who go, who would go to the high school, there is a, I guarantee you, as an alumni, there is a 100% chance that those boys are going to, you know what I mean, are, you know what I mean, are going to, are going to do, are, going to do harm. Whether it's a boy or a girl, the older kids are going to know them, when they have younger brothers and younger sisters. You got to take that into account too. Sixth graders are easily influenced, let alone fifth graders. So, I would, you know what I mean, so I would be very careful, I don't think it's appropriate, because, you know, you know, you know, because it's just not, you know, they need, they need to stay at East Meadow. I, I totally, I totally disagree with sending them, you know, sending, you know, let's just say, oh, it's 2021, oh, you're in fifth, you're in fourth grade now. I don't want to see my friend's kids, or any, you know what I mean, you know, or, you know, anybody who's in fifth grade, you know, having, having to go to GHS 11. It's bad enough they go at 12, that's just my opinion, you know? I got used to when I survived, thank you very much.
Can you read that?
Stephanie.
Stephanie?
Oh, right, hi guys. Um, I don't need to reiterate everything that everyone else has already said, because I do agree with everything JR and Kim said. My only thing is for, I'm right, but, like, like I said, I just think that, I don't see how the building can be at capacity issues. I think it's the same thing, it's misuse, because we, we saw that the school was built for, it says, 430 students, grades K through six, and additional 20 preschoolers. I know you said that you weren't sure where that number came from, is that incorrect? Is that an incorrect number?
What's the number?
The 430, K through six, and additional 20 preschoolers.
I don't know where the additional 20 came from.
So, that came from?
But 430 is basically what the MSBA project shows, 430, that's what I know.
Okay, so we did, just to verify that, you know, our information was accurate. This was from the MSBA, this was from an email with the Director of Capital Planning, that we said that the district's current 2015 slash 16 enrollment is 422 students for both West Street and East Meadow. In addition to these 21 preschool with pre-kindergarten children currently attend West Street Elementary School. It says, upon completion, the new East Meadow Elementary School will serve pre-K through six, and will accommodate 430 students as well as approximately 20 pre-K children. So, what I'm not understanding is if we're at 413 students altogether, including preschool, how it's a capacity issue?
Do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
So, here's the thing, we don't know. And that's what we're trying to find out as well.
Okay.
And, you know, we, we had multiple conversations with you folks during focus groups, trying to understand what the options were. And based on those options, we're going to do something. And one of them is going to be really look at what's available when it's built. If, if you guys watch our meetings, two, three meetings ago, when this was first brought up, that was my first question as well. In fact, I started in my, you know, simple mind, I started jotting down a linear calculation, okay, how come we cannot really fit so many students in here? But, when you look at what's currently happening, you see where the problem is. Whether or not we can solve that problem by shifting things around or looking at available capacity, it's one of the things we need to do. But we don't know. So, what I'm saying is that, yes, you know, it, it looks like it's a large, large building, but we're dependent on what, how many rooms we have, right? How many students we have, how many students we have in each grade, and then we have to go from there. But we don't know, I mean, we don't know, somebody was talking about cost. We don't know how much any option is going to cost, because we did not want to, as Heather said. We did not want that to stifle conversation and folks not really sharing what they thought. Yours is one of those, we don't know. I asked Cheryl to see if we could investigate whether or not there is a different configuration that was thought of that can be used, but it may or may not be possible. We have, in other words, we have what we have. Once you build, so you're a builder, once you build the building, put the walls up, you either break things or erase things, otherwise you play with what you have. And we don't know, we did not really go that deep, and it was part of the reason why. That reflects the fact that we did not consider any one of these options as a solution. We did not check any one of those options as a solution. We're just in the learning phase, just like you folks, we just started having these conversations as well. Does that answer your question, Stephanie?
Um, in a sense, I suppose.
Just add to that, because, one thing, Stephanie?
Yes.
I, this has been my fundamental question since we've been talking about this. And I voiced it before, I know it's on one of the meetings. But I, I feel like we're doing a lot of around talking, but this is a very simple math equation, as I see it, in my very limited knowledge. And I'm going to make myself a whole bunch of enemies, but I'm going to go out there and do it. We keep saying that this school, that this is where, where everyone's getting hung up on, and I can see it on the people who are friends, uh, who are my friends in the audience. We're saying that this school is slated for 430 people. Let's disregard the 20 people for pre-K, because no one's counting that number in. 431 students is what we've been putting up on our presentations. Our enrollment right now, give or take, is 413 students? So, 431 minus 413 is, someone help me out with simple math. How many?
18.
18 students. We are 18 students shy of our capacity. If we are 18 students shy, that is one classroom, one classroom.
That's correct.
If we are that many students shy of what this building is for capacity, then we are not at capacity. And that's why everyone's getting fired up. That's why me as a mom sitting on this board is fired up. That's why people are here, because we voted for a school, however you want to put it for grades, that is going to suit 430 students, and we are not there, and we are short on space. That's what it comes down to, and that's where I feel our fundamental question needs to be answered. Is if we are saying we're at 430 students, we're not even there yet, and we're at 413 students, and we're short. That's where we need to start. And that's why people feel like there's a misuse of space. And that's why people, people feel like we're not being transparent with them. And that's why people are angry. So, that's where I think we need to get the connection made. Someone needs to tell us where the discrepancy is for the 18 students. That's a very simple question. And we keep dancing around it, and everyone's trying to put their opinion and their space and their spin on it. But fundamentally, we're 18 students, students short of our capacity, and we are out of room. And that's what we need to answer before we can move forward.
And we should call the architect now.
Well, I completely agree, and that's what I was going to go back to, those. What we agreed on, what we voted for was one preschool room. This school currently has two, so right, right there, that's one classroom. So, I'm wondering, why are we using two preschool rooms?
Stephanie, what are we going to do with the students? I mean, those are residents, residents students.
Well, we voted for 20 preschool students, one classroom, so why are there not 20 preschool in one classroom? Plus, how many kids in that classroom?
Or, or the.
I know that there were 20 preschool students, and I got.
In our architectural program, it says, currently West Street operates with two separate preschool programs, sharing one room. We have an all-day program for four-year-olds, three days per week, and a separate program for three-year-olds that meets from nine to one, two days per week. These programs service integrated classrooms to address our legal obligation to provide an integrated learning environment for preschoolers who have been identified as having special needs. As our program currently exists, tuition's paid by those families where children are not receiving services through an individualized educational plan. Increasingly, we are seeing a need to provide a five-day-a-week full-day program for our four-year-old students. Separately, our goal is to provide services for our three-year-olds, four days per week, for four hours per day. This service model would require two classrooms and give us the flexibility to meet the varying programmatic needs that change from year to year. So, you guys did ask for two pre-K classrooms, but you only got one.
So, why are we using two? I think that's why people are so fired up, they're saying, we voted for this, we're almost at capacity, why aren't we just using what we voted for, which was the plan of the one? That would at least free up one classroom, before saying, hey, the cheapest option is leaving sixth grade to the high school, because I, I understand that.
Should we get Cal too, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, so there's a couple of questions here, right? I kind of want to come back to something else too, but, I mean, a lot of these, 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 these numbers on capacity, correct me if I'm wrong here, um, yes, there is a certain cap as to how many people will fit in the building, but there's also a certain number of rooms, right? And so, when you start to carve out a, a class for, for those, so, for the little kids that have some need for, for, for reading or math, now that's a classroom that's gone. Doesn't matter if it fit 30, or 10, or 12, it's a classroom that's gone for these kids. We, some of that has been done over the past year as a way to not have to send the kids out of district when they get to a certain point. So, there's a few things in play here, I think.
Well, respectfully, Mike, though, that's what people don't understand. So, if you have to use the classroom space differently, then that therefore affects our total capacity. If you can't have a classroom that houses 25 people, and it can only house 10 preschoolers, then the difference of those 15 students, notice this time I did simple math. If we did that, then our number then comes down from 431 minus the 15 to 416. And then that makes sense now why we're at 413 students and we're at capacity. But that's not what we're saying. We're saying our capacity is still at 430, or whatever the number is that we're choosing to go with. And that's why, you know, until we itemize them out and actually list it out, we can't say we have a capacity problem, because we haven't altered what the capacity of the building is. We're still sitting here saying we're at capacity of 430 students. We're not there.
I, I have a question. Is every, and, and I, and I couldn't read this, is every classroom from pre-K or kindergarten through six, the same exact size of this building? It's different, right? Okay. And, and, and when we filled this building with different-sized classrooms, it was specific for specific grades, right? Right? So, if the grades occupancy changed, right, I have it here, right? So, i- i- if last year kindergarten was, let's just say, 30 students, okay, in 2018, but now it's 50 students, okay? And now you got a problem because of that. Well, wait a minute, can we change around every year, different classrooms? Like, okay, well, you know, the kindergarten was the classroom one, you know, in 2018, but now it's got to be moved to classroom three, because classroom three is bigger because of, you know, it, it grew. Is that something, is, is, could that be an issue with, with this?
So, I think, I think originally, yes, because I had the same things in my head. All right, so we have a big third grade last year, right?
Sure.
Is that going to be an issue? No, because third grade moves up, we can take a classroom, redesignate it to fourth grade next year, then redesignate another classroom to fifth grade. Meanwhile, this third grade now can maybe be something else, right? I think that's what you're saying?
Sure.
The problem is, is I think behind the fourth grade now, it doesn't get any better all the way back. It's, it's a big, it's a big pipe, there's no room to kind of shift something back down. I think that's the problem they're having right now.
Well, I think that's probably, you're, you're probably correct, because you know, you built a beautiful new school, now everybody wants to come into it.
And the other question, just to follow up with, with Jen's numbers, is that I view it as there are 21 classrooms in, in this building. 21 classrooms that you would consider putting in a first, or second, or third, or fourth, or fifth, or sixth. There's other spaces, the special ed rooms, that are smaller rooms, but they're not designed for classrooms. Mostly, am I correct, the renovated classrooms in East Meadow are probably all the same size. And I believe the classrooms basically, except maybe for pre-K and kindergarten, the grades one, two, three, and I think isn't, isn't three in the new, and there are some threes also in the renovated, they're basically the same size. And the other way, there's 21 classrooms that you can put kids into, you know, the 20 or 22 kids or 23. That's the other magic number you have to look at.
Well, you can put more in there.
You can put more kids in, but I'm, but there's only, but there's only one 20, one in classrooms unless one proposal was to take the art room away, then you'd have 22 classrooms, but I don't think, it's an option, but I don't think you want to do that to the art program.
I, I don't agree with that. But, but there's a room, one way from here, I don't know where it's, it, it, it is, it is humongous, it's the size of this ladder. It's got a partition in the middle of it, and it's for PT.
Yeah, just, I mean, we keep going around in circles, and I guess another reason people are, well, what I've been hearing is people are upset because, um, you guys came to us saying, moving sixth grade, and so that's why we're giving the opinion that you guys, you can, you didn't come to us with any other ideas. It was, okay, you guys are now upset, and found out that you're upset about moving sixth grade, so now it's, oh, well, let's come up with other options, and you guys did great thing with the focus groups. But I feel that you guys want to do that, if you didn't hear through your great mind that everyone was upset. So, I'm interested in hearing, now that you did the focus groups, what are the other options besides sixth grade?
So, so can we table that until we get to that point in the meeting, a little bit later, sorry? I just, I just want to make sure that everybody's had a chance to, to speak in this part. And I, I don't know if there was one more piece about pre-K that we wanted to talk about, and I don't know if you can talk about that? Well, I just, I just want to make sure that you were all set.
I think more audience or the, um, Charles or?
Well, I think she had some, some things about.
No, I mean, I, I think just to wrap mine up, I was just curious why, rather than trying to move anyone over to the high school, we weren't sticking to the plan that we voted on, because the one preschool room instead of two, which would open up another classroom, and use the building in the way it was intended for, I suppose.
So, three meetings ago, I asked the same question. So, that's why I'm saying that if we can, if we can have this conversation and consider all these different options available, that may end up being what we, what we do. Um, you know, I, I don't know her name, but just, you know, the point, what's your name?
Lori.
Lori? Lori's point that there was only one option that went out there, we did not hear any options. I mean, for whatever reason, we were, we were basically coming to this conversation when folks apparently were having some conversation about sixth grade moving somewhere. We're just starting having these conversations, and, you know, again, if it's any consolation, we cannot have these conversations outside these meetings. So, you go and look at every meeting that we had, the first time we started was the first time you heard us talk about it. That's why we're saying that, believe us when we say, we're just having this conversation to understand what the options are, even if, and even though, early on, there may have been this rumor that was circulating that basically became this force by itself, that everybody started talking about that single option. That's not a single option for us.
But that's what's hard to totally believe, because in fact, then my 10-year-olds came home saying, mom, and my 12-year-old. and my twelve-year-old came home saying, mom, this is, this is happening. I've heard it from my people, and I understand that's how rumors start. But where did that rumor start? My ten-year-old just doesn't come home saying that, it's like, so.
I have to say, we didn't discuss it.
I'm, yeah, I know.
And I don't know where it came from, but we didn't discuss it and, and had someone come to her talking about it. So the sixth grade, this is the first we've ever heard of it. So, and it is not the only option.
I just think in general, people don't feel like other options were looked into as thoroughly as moving to sixth grade. It felt like that was the focus option. And the others were just like, oh, yeah, we can listen to it, that's why people took that, because that's what could be reiterated over and over again. Because I think that that's just why people are so fired up. When you say reiterated, do you mean like from focus groups, or, or from other conversations that you have with people? Just for clarification? No, from, from focus groups. I think that was definitely the most, um, you know, talked about, we did, of course, there's tons of options, and I understand that they're not feasible. We can't just put a beautiful dome over the courtyard and make it a, you know, three-story building. I get that, but I think that it kept kind of back to, you know, logistically, it made more sense. And that's why it kept getting brought up more and more was moving sixth grade. You know, they did talk to the fifth graders, no one talked to the preschoolers or the preschool parents. So we just don't feel like it was looked at as thoroughly as moving sixth grade.
Well, I think, I thought all parents were invited.
Yeah.
I don't think there was a.
No, I mean, um, at school, like as far as they did a focus group with the fifth and sixth grade. And as parents, I don't think that it felt like that's the direction they wanted to go to. There was no focus group, you know, they had fifth and sixth grade just at school yesterday, but no one's talking preschool and seeing about those options. So the parents are just feeling like, okay, it's definitely leaning this way because this is what's being continually talked about, is the sixth grade moving over.
So I ask, is it, is it being talked about the most because that's what the hottest button is for people out there, or is it just, is that what is leading these discussions in the groups? Because I, I don't know, I wasn't at any of the focus groups.
I guess the fifth graders got sat down, right? And spoke to leadership and the schools themselves. Because, you know, and I'm just wondering why that, that effort at that time wasn't spread to the other areas too? Like, why was the preschool talked about, because that was an option?
So, I'm just gonna speculate.
So you want a three-year-old?
Preschoolers are, I mean, they should have moved, not the three-year-old, but the parents, maybe.
Yeah, maybe there are questions.
That was just.
I don't think that's why, I was thinking it's true. They, they're questioning the difference in sixth grade. Why didn't any of the preschool parents say?
Oh, preschoolers not?
I'm saying, why wasn't any of that, I'm not saying these options were talked about. Why wasn't that often taken at the preschool parents' thing? What would your input be to the focus group of the parents at preschool?
Okay, so.
And, and I know that sounds silly, but I just want to clarify, maybe, you know, sit down with the parents, say, there's a reality that we've talked with fifth and sixth. Sixth, we probably shouldn't have talked, they're going regardless, just like I did with that one. So anyhow, with that being said, I just think that maybe the efforts should have been equal. You know, and that's why I think a lot of people think that that's the aim, that's the option, is to move six, it's the easy. They just spoke to, this is the way we're headed. And so there is truth to that. And then, and I just wanna add, just on the record on camera too, I did a little driving around, I'm big in the community, I love grandy fun more than anybody, I talked to over a hundred people, people that had statements, parents like myself, acting system, in this very school. Um, I talked to people that have no statement, like my parents, you know, and, and other people. And stood it over and I said, have you heard, you know, have you read the paper that we're, the new brand of school is at capacity? A, they were surprised, they're sitting at home, I did great thing, I voted the way I did, and, you know, for the community. And they had no idea. So I want, I want, there's a larger picture here, it's people that aren't affected, have no clue about this. And then they were shocked, and said, then I said, it's a possibility that sixth could be moved by. So that was one of the options that was given to us, right, at the focus group on screen. So they were like wowed by that. Hundreds of people said, I was, I was kind of blown away with the feedback I got. They said, it's an easy solution here. I said, it is? What is it? And they said, move the preschool, because it's not mandated by a lot of, you know, some kids go to daycare, some stay home with their, you know, whoever, loved one, family members. I'm just saying, that's what they told me, these are all really have no statement.
It's not an option either, or it's not a solution that we decided on either. So it's just like any, any of the other options, but thank you for sharing.
No, and then people.
So I do, I do wanna reiterate, no decision has been made. I mean, we haven't received any, any feedback as, as far as what to make a decision on just yet. And, and do you raise your hand, Jacob?
I just wanted to say one more thing real quick. Um, sorry. Um, Mark Bales was on the school building committee. Correct, right, okay. So he posted, we did indeed discuss whether there was enough space in East Meadow. As a committee, we discussed the cost and the space. I didn't remember this, Emery did. The discussion came down to cost. This was, I believe, before the vote. As a committee, we argued about the tax increase versus cost of more space. Our tax increase was seven point seven percent. Would taxpayers support a higher tax increase? Some committee members wanted to keep the tax increase lower, some wanted to rip voters rejecting the project and spend more. We ended up agreeing on the tax increase. So there was discussions at some point about the size of the vote.
Well, and, and, you know, if you want to, we, I just said, the footprint was larger, it got reduced. And since, you know, Mark seems to have thrown me in front of the bus.
Train, train, everything.
Yes. I actually, you know, I don't, I don't know, but, you know, I, I did not want the reduction, but you have to understand, this is a committee that really took every bit of information to make sure that this was a sufficient building for the students in this town, based on what we knew at the time. If we did not have the numbers that we have today, we would not even be having these conversations. We would not be looking for eighteen, one more classroom, we would be fine. Twenty twenty hindsight is beautiful, but we did not have that luxury. And no one, I can tell you, even though we had our disagreements when we were talking about reducing the footprint, no one on that committee voted for a building that they knew tomorrow would be insufficient for, for the students in this town. That, that would have been a no-no. And I, there was no such conversation as, hey, you know what? Whatever you guys end up doing, as soon as you open the school, but, you know, we're not gonna spend more than this. Yes, cost is always an issue. But no one on that committee said, this is too small, but that's what we're gonna, we're gonna propose. Based on what was available then, this was the decision. Again, twenty twenty, beautiful when you look back, but, um, once the building is up, we can solve that problem. That's why we're trying to see what the viable options are for us to be able to make a good decision. I mean, some of the points that you guys are raising are valid. They, they are, you know, they are well thought out, obviously you did the research and all that. But whatever is related to the past, we can't really change it. How can we find the best solution? That's what we're trying to really get. And I'll talk to Mark.
I do, I do think it's probably, it's probably best if we figure out how to communicate the capacity phrase a little bit differently to, a little, be a little bit more accurate, where it's not a capacity and the number of students within the building. It's a capacity issue with regards to the number of rooms we have for what we need to do. Does that make sense? I think, I think that's kind of what we're.
Right, that's, that's where the disconnect is, is we're, we've got numbers out there that don't add up to what it is, so.
And just to add one more thing, there, there are constraints of different, different types that we have to go with. I, I think I was, you know, sharing with one of the tables that there are legal constraints, that we have to, we have to abide by. There are some decisions that the school committees make, and we have a decision similar to that, that we're not gonna go to thirty students in a classroom, for instance. Uh, since you guys did all the research, you probably have seen that, you know, when you exceed a certain point, you can't really focus on each student the way we would like our teachers to be able to. Otherwise, you know, look at the highest number that we have. First grade, we have sixty-six. If we were to make a decision that thirty-three was okay, assuming all the numbers are gonna remain the same, thirty-three in one classroom is okay, then we have no problem. We solved the problem right there. That's, those are the different variables that we're trying to really, uh, look at so that we can find the best, best options available to us.
Great, but if this was known three months ago, why were they taking all these school, school choice children in this year? Why didn't they just stop and wait a year on school choice? Figure out the building issues and the kids, rather than taking in students that now we have to keep forever if they wanna stay? I mean, we added fourteen children through one grade.
I don't wanna speak out of turn, and I'm gonna ask our superintendent to, uh, to stop me if, you know, I'm, I'm sharing the wrong information. The school committee makes a decision that says, for each grade, we're gonna allow so many school choice students. But that decision has to be made by a certain deadline. And then, you know, we start getting students. We did not, we were not, we're not really discussing this, we did not have this information three months ago. I mean, whether, you know, you folks choose to believe it or not, we were not discussing this three months ago.
No, I said, three meetings ago.
Even three months ago, wouldn't be past June first, that's the deadline, right, to, for school committee?
You said three meetings ago, so that's why I just came up with three months ago. I said, three meetings a month.
Well, we meet every other week.
Twice a month.
So it would have been September.
We brought this, the first time it was brought up was the first meeting in September, I think it was like the.
September tenth.
September tenth.
It was brought to you.
Yes.
Correct.
At some point. I mean, Mr. Latoy flat out said to me in focus groups that he's known about this. And the plan was always to move sixth grade. He said it numerous times in focus groups. So he, we knew about this, maybe you guys didn't, but.
Can I ask a point of order? I don't want my name put out there on something I didn't say, or to be misquoted. I don't think that's what we're here for, and I don't think it's gonna get us anywhere. I think we've heard a lot of the same information, and I think we need to move forward. I'm really disappointed in, in the way that the meeting's going. I also, the school choice information, we didn't accept any school choice this year in third, fourth, fifth, or sixth. So I don't know where the misinformation's coming from, but there's a lot of misinformation, and it's not getting us anywhere. So I don't know, I just wanted to say that, I'm sorry if I'm out of line, but you've been talking for quite a while now, and I think, you know, you could easily move forward. There's a lot of information that wants to be presented tonight that you're not even getting to.
Yeah, yeah, I. Do you mind? We, there is so much information, and a good chunk of it is wrong information, that if we don't take the opportunity, I'm assuming folks are gonna be watching at least this one out of all those. If we don't correct it now, as you, you know, Bill, silence sometimes is taken as admission, and we really want to take advantage of, you know, folks who are here to be able to respond to that. Otherwise, you're making a good point, but I think we have an opportunity to, to be able to answer to some of these questions, one, number two, maybe correct some of the information that is, that is out there. So I, I agree with what you're saying, but, you know, hopefully we're doing it for the purpose.
And just to answer that, I think, you know, a lot of the information that we've collected, and we, the Advent team has been out there doing this, we're not presenting the information back. So maybe, you know, if there's, if it's three minutes that they're supposed to be speaking to, and that's what's on the agenda, and, and, you know, you, you should follow that and, and just move it through and get those questions and put them down, and then, you know, come up with a response to that, I think would, would make the most sense, you know, as well. But I think, you know, they're presenting a lot of things and putting a lot of things out there, and there's no answer for them. Like, the school choice is completely wrong, you know, and, and the fact that I've been talking about these five years, I've only been here three and a half years. So if I've known something for five years, I don't know how I could have known that.
I can only speak for myself, but thank you, Emery, for talking, because honestly, it does help, like, to respond back and forth. I think it's been, I can only speak for myself, my only concern was the capacity in the preschool room. But I think that having an open dialogue is more helpful than just our three minutes and then moving on. So thank you for your time.
Well, that's kind of why I allowed more than three minutes and kind of let it go as long as I did. But unless there's something new, I would like to move forward now with the rest of the meeting. Seamus?
I would like to say, we should like, you know, you know, like, you know, you know, parents even as, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not a parent, but you know, I mean, even I know, we should like, you know, we should fact-check, you know, what, you know, who we hear from, you know, like, say, like, you know, you heard it from Mr., not gonna say his name, because he's just wanting to be upset. You heard it from him, or you heard it from Mike, or you heard it from Jennifer, or you heard it from Emery. We should fact-check what was said in the YouTube, you know, you know, meetings, and, you know, listen to every detail very carefully. That way we're not all confused on, you know, this amount of students, or this number of students, or minus, or plus, or times, or divide, or um, do we have numerous of students, do we have multiples, you know, all that other, all that other math stuff that we learn. Which I wasn't the best math student, as you all know, really. I'm just gonna say that we should all fact-check, you know, what, you know, what a teacher says or what a school administrator says, and see if it's correct or up to date. That's all I wanna say.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give Alex a plug here and say, not only do we meet every other week, but meetings are not only on YouTube, but they're also aired on.
Jennifer team.
There you go.
Do you mind I build on that? Please come more often. Honestly, I mean, we've been, we've been saying this for years now. We added that section to our agenda, which is one of those sections that doesn't change. These meetings are open meetings, they're open to older visitors. We, we're not always gonna have this extended conversation. But if you have something that you wanna share, anything that you would like to ask, and we don't necessarily answer questions on the spot usually, but please come and share, because there's nothing that can, that can replace that face-to-face, in-person conversation.
And, and we really do strive to be very open with these, with these meetings, so. Yes, it's much easier if you're sitting here than trying to read about it on, on the internet a couple of days later or, or before. So I guess we're gonna move on to new business, the technology donation. Is David still with us?
I was, I told the committee that I would do a brief presentation some time ago. Because there were some questions pertaining to, you know, the continued use of donated equipment at the high school and how that, um, is being leveraged with purchased equipment that was purchased last summer. Um, so I'm just gonna go through that very briefly and entertain any questions. So, at the high school, amongst the biggest purchased items last summer, which are in use now, were the Chromebook carts. We purchased a total of two hundred and seventy Chromebooks to create a one-to-one environment for grades seven and eight, and then several, um, Chromebook carts for the department's content areas between grades nine and twelve. This is something that was recommended by the technology auditor that was here last year, that presented to this committee. This is one of the recommendations he had, and we followed through with it. More importantly, it was done so there would be continuity for the students as they progressed through grades. The students last year enjoyed a new environment where they were exposed to a lot of technology in this building. And they would, they were, students in grades five and six were having a one-to-one environment. And had we not made this purchase, it would have been a regressive move for them. They would have lost that. So we didn't want that to happen. So now, at the grades seven and eight, they have, they have a continuation at one-to-one environment. If you walk around the high school, you're gonna see these devices in use throughout the day, throughout the building. Room one oh nine, we put a new computer lab in there with purchased equipment. Uh, that room is where some of the, uh, more advanced classes are taught, the computer science class, the advanced applications class, the CAD class. These classes require higher-end computers. Could those classes be taught on donated used equipment? Yes. Would it be as, would, would it be as good of an experience for the students? No, it would not. The computers would be slower, uh, they would not perform as well, and some parts of the program may not work. Um, we've had programs in the past that would not function on some of the older equipment. So that was a necessity. The other item that was purchased that was also part of the technology audit is that our teachers, particularly at the high school, did not have dedicated computers. When a teacher was conducting a class, they were running wires across the room, connecting to a student computer to project, to lead classroom discussions, activities, and lectures. So what we did was we purchased laptops for the teachers. And now they have the ability to move them about the building. Once again, that was something that, um, the donated equipment would not have satisfied. We do get a lot of donated laptops, which we're very grateful for, but. We do get a lot of donated laptops, which we're very grateful for, but they, they did not have the technology for a fast boot up. So a teacher who was moving about the building during the day, moving between classrooms, would lose time. They would come into a room, have to start the device up, they'd lose several minutes at the beginning of each class, lose time at the end of class to shut it down, did not have the processor, or the type of hard drive for a fast boot like these do here. Finally, on the purchase, we did this in a very fiscally conservative manner. Going back to the Chromebooks, under Mass State contract, we solicited two quotes from two Mass State contract vendors. One was approximately $68,000, the other one was approximately $71,000. We found an out-of-state company that was able to provide the same equipment, same manufacturer, okay, for less than $60,000. So, but they weren't on Massachusetts state contract. So we were out to, we went out to bid, they came in as the low bidder. It probably cost a few hundred dollars for the legal advertisements to do the bid, so we saved a lot, a lot of money with the Chromebooks by using the out-of-state contractor. For the computer lab, we got a very good competitive price from the state contract vendor that was, that we purchased those from. The teacher laptops fell under the threshold requirement for state bidding. We found a vendor that would, that was selling these Dell, as you've seen the picture, these Dell laptops that were refurbished laptops, they get refurbished, and they sell them to the school with a new warranty, and it's approximately half the price of going brand-new. So we saved a lot of money with that, and accomplished the goals that were prescribed in the technology audit. For donated equipment, we can, we get a lot of donated laptops, they are being used primarily in special classrooms, like special education classrooms, the English language classrooms, and for our new esports programs. They also get used in the library. There's probably 25 to 30 of them right now in use for those purposes in the high school. So once again, if someone says, why are you still using donated ones, those would be, that's, those are several areas that would be without technology if we were not leveraging the donated. Desktops, we don't get as many donated desktops now, but the ones we did get, we put into the art room. The art teacher has some special programs that she runs in there, GIMP and Photoshop specifically, and they run very well on those desktops. The ones that were in there last year were no longer functional, so this summer, we put these newer ones in that were donated. Room 10 is another lab at the high school. We used laptops in that room, and the reason we used laptops in a lab is because that's what we had. Someone who was very generous donated close to 30 laptops that were in great condition that can run Windows 10. We put them in room 110, and now we have another Microsoft lab that is used daily as well. So, these are areas, once again, that we would be without had we not been using the donated equipment. The other area where there's a lot of donated equipment is the library as well at the high school, and, and finally, we have some older devices at the high school on the left-hand side here, these older HP desktops. These were previously donated a couple years ago to the school, we used them. They are no longer capable of running the up-to-date Microsoft operating system, so we converted them to Chromeboxes. So we have one in every classroom at the high school, and the purpose they serve is that if there's a classroom that on a particular day, the teacher, particularly in the upper grade levels, did not sign out a laptop cart for the day, a Chromebook cart, and there was a student or two students that needed to finish an assignment, or need to print something out, that is in there for that purpose, and they do get used. So once again, we repurposed them, we, we formatted the hard drive, we moved the Microsoft operating system, and they function like a Chromebook. There's special software that we have a site license for that we can put that on. We had a lot of networked computers at the, network printers at the high school that were very old, some 15-plus years old, and obviously, they were breaking down quite a bit, they were very slow, particularly if you sent anything with graphics or charts. So, a company that the school does business with that services our photocopiers said, you know, we have a bunch of used equipment, and some of it's in near-brand-new condition, we'll gladly donate that to you. And when I was looking at the odometers on some of these that were donated to us, some of them, many of them had less than 100 pages on it. And what it was is a customer, another customer purchased them, and after having them for a while, realized they wanted a color printer instead, but it was, they had it too long to return it, so they were stuck with it. So, they, we ended up getting it as a donation, almost like new. Some of the, one of them, I think, had 12 pages on the odometer, it was pretty much a brand-new printer. So we have those throughout the high school. So, once again, we rely upon those. So, in summary, you know, we, we need both. We need, for the time being, purchasing equipment has its place, and leveraging the donated equipment is obviously still very critical. And that's my presentation on that, and I do have one final slide on our managed services update. Back in the spring, when we were told we would have to switch to managed services, I know there were a lot of questions, I just wanted to convey to the school committee and to the community that it was a good investment, we have better cost control over maintaining the network, we have better service. There were some times where we had some critical needs, where, where we had instant access to an engineer. The day before map testing was to begin in this building, we had a problem where the Chromebooks were not connecting to the network, the day, the afternoon before. I called up, and they had an engineer resolve the problem in about an hour, and we didn't have to postpone testing the next day. And I can give several examples, but, you know, as I indicated bottom, there were no extra costs, it was not billable per hour, that blanket contract covered it. So, thank you for your time, and if anyone has any questions?
Thank you, David.
I just have a couple things. One, thank you, David, and his part-time help over the summer for deploying all of this. The easy part was building this in the budget last year. I'm not sure we focused on how hard it would be to get all these technology upgrades into the high school over the summer, and it was certainly a daunting task, so certainly thank you to David and his staff. And just, secondly, a point of clarification, I know it came up before, about the $3 million in the building project purchasing technology. All of these upgrades were purchased with money delegated to the school department. So I just want that out there to be clear. We had talks with the select board, finance committee, everyone was aware that that's what we were using money for, and it was no, that money's not tied to this building. I just think that's a point that we wanna get out there, that we decided, like David said, that the fifth and sixth grades here would be coming from a one-to-one environment, moving to the high school and regressing, and I, we weren't really, it's not the point where we want our students at. So, again, thank you, David, and that money was money that was the school department's, and it was totally separate from this building project.
Thank you. And what file, you know, I continue to pursue the donations, I vet the donations that come in to make sure they're high-quality, the stuff that we get, you know, is usable stuff that comes in, and our district's very blessed. It is not common, it's very rare that schools get the, any significant quantity of donations. Some of the schools will make big press when they get 10 computers donated. Over the years, we had several hundred get donated to us. So, we're very, I, I, you know, I know you guys are, and everyone's grateful for these people that donate, so thanks to them, and thank you for your time tonight.
And David, that's all, thank you to the connections that you have made over the years, so, those connections have paid off very nicely.
The part where you're talking about the, 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 the folks you have on call, if you have an issue?
Managed services.
Managed services. Is there any way, is it, would, would it be difficult to figure out how much last year's way we did, we, we went about that, would've cost us this year without that, that it placed? Does that make sense? Because I know last year, we didn't have, have that in place, and you were in here saying that it was, it was hard sometimes to get the help you needed.
Correct. We have to wait, because when you don't have a managed contract, you're, you're last on the list. The managed customers come first.
Okay.
Which now we are, we were not a managed customer last year.
The savings is more in the time, Mike, than, I mean, there were some savings financially, but it was more in time. Like David said, having this kind of umbrella of services, we call up, we're on the phone with the tech in minutes, and we have a solution within an hour, where if that happened on a Friday last year, it might not be till Monday morning, or Tuesday morning-
Or Tuesday, Wednesday.
And we could be in the middle of a map testing, or something like that. So, so there is savings financially, but the significant savings is in time.
I think the challenge that we, Adam and I could put whatever numbers you're looking for together, the challenge is how meaningful they're gonna be, because last year, we were still under a warranty for all the new equipment in this building, okay? So, you know, there might've been a lot of stuff that was covered by that, that wouldn't show up as a financial cost, okay? The other thing is, now, all that new equipment is rolled into, you know, us being responsible for. So in the last year and a half, the amount of equipment, you know, that we have managing, that we have to maintain, is literally more than doubled. But you wouldn't see that because of, because of the warranty, and now the warranty is up, so now we're responsible, so, so, you know, we have to be careful how we look at numbers.
No, I just, I just trying to get a sense of whenever we make a change, I just wanna make sure we look back and say, did that make sense the way we went about it versus maybe we could've or should've done?
I think maybe as the fiscal year comes to an end, it might make a little more sense to look at that?
Yeah, and the other thing, though, we, forced might be the wrong word, but the, the model of service that we had last year, they were moving away from that model of service. So, we had to either go into this overarching service, or it was kinda like an à la carte, and we pay by whatever service we needed, which would've been, you know, an astronomical amount. So, we kinda had, I don't wanna say forced, but we kinda had no choice to kinda move in this direction.
Plus, I think what I'm hearing is, it wouldn't make sense to try to compare, because there was nothing to compare to.
Yeah, there, yeah, unfortunately, yes. I mean, we can certainly, I can, me and David can certainly get you a cost, I just don't think it's gonna yield an answer that is gonna be like, oh, you know, it's more of a time thing. I think we've saved a lot of time, and, and it's more efficient, the process.
And I'm, I am leveraging them a lot more than I ever had because of all the extra equipment that we have on a network. The security concerns now in the world are drastically higher than they were just a year ago, so I am on the phone with them, you know, at least a couple times a week with security issues. Not that we have security problems, but because we have to update something on the network, or we have to open up something, we have to whitelist something, blacklist something.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, David.
So you want me to move C up? All right. If nobody minds, I think we're gonna switch our, I think, around a little bit and get right into the results of the focus groups. Unless Cheryl just left.
I think she left.
She's walking around.
Walking around.
You don't wanna do it, and we just think.
All right.
All right.
Okay, so I'm here to present the results of the focus groups. So, what we did, I just wanna be very clear, is this is all of the feedback, okay? So it's not cleaned up in any way, except to maybe correct intent, and what we then did is look at some themes that emerge out of the data. Now, with that being said, the, one of the results of the feedback was to interview students, to get the voice of students, so we did do that, and another piece of feedback was to get the voice of teachers. So, the presentation is like 64 slides long. I don't think I'll go through all 64, because we only have daycare or childcare until 8:30. I think they can go a little longer, so if I'm rushed, I apologize. They all left? I can go till like midnight, then. Awesome. Great. So there's no more babysitters? No more little ones? Okay, all right, awesome.
Larken, scaly your parents.
We do have another student, though, so I don't know.
Oh, sure, I'll write you a pass.
No school.
All right, so we, we can stay on topic, then. So, feedback. We've collected feedback in four focus groups with parents, 14 focus groups with students grades five through 12, and sent surveys to all teachers and paraprofessionals. Thank you, many of you who are here tonight, were at the focus groups, so thank you for participating. We had approximately 50 people who participated. There was representation from many stakeholder groups, parents of future students, current parents who have students in the district, also community members. So it really was a broad representation. The focus groups provided thoughtful feedback, engaged, engaged in respectful dialogue. We focused on problem identification and providing feedback on options that the leadership team has been considering, and we gather important feedback and are following up with suggestions and questions. So as I mentioned, some of the feedback was, can you get the voice of students? So we did go out and do focus groups with students, and can you get the voice of parents? So we did, I mean, teachers, so we did go and survey teachers. So, as a result, we've surveyed teachers, we held the focus groups, we have reached out to the architect to gather insights into building usage and the history of design solutions and decisions.
Cheryl, is that the architect that did this building?
Yes.
Or a third-party designer?
Nope, the architect that designed the building, so they are actually gonna come do a walkthrough with us to identify any potential changes that we can do in current programming. We haven't scheduled a date yet, but hopefully, within the next week or so, they responded immediately to the request. We have adjusted the timeline of next steps to allow for more input and collection of more information. So, the timeline is always flexible, and it's the result of feedback. So if we need more information, it isn't that we're not trying to be transparent, or hide anything, or come up with a different solution, it is literally that we are acting on your feedback. So you give us feedback, and we say, we need some changes, we need more time, we need to gather more information, so that's what we're doing.
Can I just ask real quick? You said that you needed to know something by November 5th for the budget, so that's no longer the case.
Right, so if we have a budget request, or a resource allocation request, originally, we thought we would move it through the budget and capital, we won't have time to do that, so instead, we would use a different avenue with the town, more something like a special town meeting, so that gives us a little bit more flexibility to go before the town, if there's a cost factor above anything that we could assume in the budget process. And we are holding a school, a school tour of Grumby Junior Senior High School on October 18th at 8:30. I am getting some feedback that they would like a night tour, so I'm gonna work with the principal, Stephen Sullivan, to see if we can arrange that, so be on the lookout on the website, Facebook, Twitter, we'll get that information out to you. So I have heard that, and we will accommodate. So, reminders about the process. No decision has been made, there never has been a decision made. We have strong opinions, all of us. I'm a former middle school principal, you've heard me talk about that, I have former principals who are middle school principals, I have preschool people, so we have opinions, and we aren't afraid to share them, but I reiterate, no decision has been made. The process is in place to gather feedback on possible options to address the East Meadow Enrollment Facility's capacity issue. Clearly, what I'm hearing tonight is we have to define the issue, so my next presentation will actually have a map and the numbers of classes and the grade levels, so that we can be more clear about the difference between total capacity of numbers of kids in the building versus how we have students in classrooms and how we're using them, because that's a disconnect I'm hearing, and we need to clarify that, so the community understands why it is we're encountering the problem that we are. Let's see, the collection of feedback has led to more information gathering. We're gathering information about preschool, we're gathering information, as I said, from the architect, and there's some other pieces when we get into the feedback that we will be examining. The leadership team will be making a recommendation to the school committee, and again, the timeline has been adjusted and may continue to be adjusted to a- to address questions and concerns that come out of the feedback that we get. Um, but eventually, uh, the final decision will be made by school committee and it will be an open meeting. So the purpose of this evening, um, is to share feedback that we've been gathering, to ensure everyone is informed about what we've heard so far from multiple stakeholders, and to establish next steps and a timeline. So, when we had our focus groups, if you participated, you heard these questions. Uh, we actually had five. Uh, it was, we have considered moving preschool to Granby Junior Senior High School and alternate site or using modular classrooms for preschool. What do you see as potential benefits and challenges to this option? Uh, we have considered moving specials programming, art and music classes from classrooms. What do you see as potential benefits and challenges to this option? I thought Marcus was gonna steal my seat and be the superintendent, that would be cool. We have considered moving grade six to Granby Junior Senior High School. What do you see as potential benefits and challenges, challenges to this option? We have considered keeping East Meadow pre-K through grade six. What do you see as potential cha- benefits and challenges to this option? I'm trying to go too fast, I'm gonna slow down, take a breath. Kate Forrest would be very proud. Um, of all the things that we have discussed, what is the most important to you? I have to say that that question alone was very enlightening to us, um, as administrators and as the leadership team, so. And also, it's really take my chair so easier to see. Okay. All right. So question number one, which is, um, we've considered moving Granby Junior Senior High School to the alternate site using modulators, modulators, or to Granby Junior Senior High School. What are the benefits? So, some of the themes we heard was the high school building a preschool connection in the same building, developing a child study program. We heard that other districts have preschools in their high school. It would certainly open up space and make better space at East Meadow. Sixth graders wouldn't have to move. And older kids from the high school would be nicer maybe to the youngest, um, the younger kids in pre-K. Um, and sixth graders, we heard, wouldn't be viewed as the weakest link, um, and really, uh, could reduce the hazing piece. I should just back up the train a little bit. We're presenting the feedback, we're not making any judgments about this, this is just what people said. Okay, I just want to be clear that we're presenting the feedback. We've tried to organize it in some themes, but we have no judgment on this. This is what we heard and how we will move forward with what we heard. Some of the challenges of this, of course, would be the renovation part, bathroom, sink, secure playground, um, and the effective use of personnel. Uh, we do a lot of services with OTPT, and running them between two buildings can be a challenge, as it was when they were in West Street and East Meadow. Um, so that's a challenge that we heard. New ideas and comments? Again, feedback, right? Use modulators, don't you dare use modulators, like, I don't want my kid in a trailer. So, you know, we heard two very different opinions on that. Uh, we did hear as a new idea, another location such as the old library, West Street School, or Town Hall with Senior Center, in the future, when they build us a town hall. And then question number two, uh, we have considered moving specials programming, art and music classes from classrooms. What do you see as potential benefits and challenges to this option? Benefits, it creates the needed space. When you have no money, you get creative. Not sure that, uh, maybe it's a benefit, I don't know. Um, challenges, uh, this was very clearly not an option, people like gave good feedback. The challenges were immense, the logistics, setting up and breaking down for a teacher, have, putting them on a cart, um, the kiln, the supplies, the instruments. Uh, it would affect the quality of the programming. It really isn't possible from a cart to do what they're doing now in terms of instruction. Um, and worries about losing these programs if this were to happen. And in addition to that, we fought really hard in the past when budget was tight to keep music and art. Um, and it isn't, it's a, it's a value that the community has, and we heard that loud and clear. The challenge is that, from a student perspective, movement. Students need a break from the classroom, they need to get up and go to a different location. Specials end when they leave the room, so they go in, they have this experience, and then they come back to their academic, um, instruction. Um, and especially those with social emotional struggles need that different environment. They need that different, um, motion to go from class to class, so that they can take sort of a mental break, uh, from their instructional, um, environments. And teachers, the challenges, what we heard was that teachers deserve these rooms. And that they have created cool environments for students to thrive. I got you. So new ideas, um, can we move music to the stage or other common area? Can we combine some of the smaller classrooms, the ABA, OTPT, SEL to make more room? Can we go to the high school for instrumental classes, half-day kindergarten as opposed to full? Um, and some of the questions, comments, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And artists and musicians come from a love of these subjects when students are young. Question number three, we have considered moving grade six to Granby Junior Senior High School. What do you see as the potential benefits and challenges to this option? So benefits, we heard, um, programming, um, improved programming, foreign language, after-school clubs, middle school level sports, additional staff. Six-eight aligns better with the standards, um, more advanced math classes, project lead the way, STEM classes, science labs, again, middle school sports. Space, um, it does solve the space issue with no modulators, um, and the bathrooms are the right size for sixth graders. Cost, uh, there was discussion about cost, potentially no renovation cost when compared to, um, uh, moving preschool. And then socially, sixth graders already know seventh graders through sports. Students already talking on social media, et cetera. Elementary is geared to younger kids, so sixth graders won't be treated like babies. Um, example, low turnout at literacy night for our upper elementary students. And then only one-year difference between sixth and seventh graders, and fifth and sixth graders would transition together. Challenges, we heard a lot about busing. Um, busing being a challenge, sixth graders on the bus with twelfth graders, seven-thirty start time, um, and being alone from two to four, definitely heard that. Definitely heard the difference of age and maturity levels, a, a real concern and a challenge. Uh, the maturity level of a sixth grader versus a twelfth grader, no more recess for sixth graders. Again, not passing judgment, not answering, that was just a statement. Passing in the halls and use of common areas with high schoolers. Worries about the culture and being exposed to things that they shouldn't be too early. Language in the hallways was a concern. The concern of seventh graders dating ninth graders. Um, the possibility of younger students taking advanced classes with older students, a challenge in that the grade, age span of a potential sixth grader taking, let's say, Algebra I with an eighth grader, like, that's a concern. And then, um, the physical condition of the school, mold concerns we heard about. Um, main goal was to attract new families to the town with a new school. And, uh, we heard a con- a concern about doctor recommending not sending a child to the high school because of the condition. So new ideas, uh, alignment of six through eight, uh, redesigning and clustering six through eight. Again, we heard cluster six through eight. Um, one parent attended five through eight school. Uh, if we talk about renovation, we could restructure the areas to more of a middle school and high school. And if Granby were to roll out an adequate middle school model, this would be an easier pill to swallow. Um, managing interactions, six-twelve. Paths of walking around the building, managing schedules to have six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve lunches, et cetera. Um, high schools using only certain stairwells, provide recess for six through eight, move focus groups, uh, for the population who will be displaced. Uh, I'm sorry, more focus groups for the population who will, will be displaced. Have a different start time was an idea, um, bus everyone at the same time. A comment was you don't have to worry about nine-twelve. Really, the dot-dot-dot on that is that nine through twelve doesn't care about the younger kids. They don't really pay attention to them. Again, we heard path of walking through the building, escorting students through the hallways for middle school, and then providing a fifteen-minute gap between lunches could address some of the mingling concerns that were brought up. Questions, comments about, uh, the transition? More information, families requesting a tour at the high school, a list of six-twelve schools, getting testimony from kids who have already transitioned, so that's why we did, um, seven through twelve. Um, we also did five and six to get an idea of what they were thinking. We would like to know more about the programming, um, how would it be set up? How would we handle lunches? Would they take more elective classes? Asking for a list of pre-Ks that are in high schools. They would like to look at a program. And then, is this that the town does have the money? Or, does the town have the money, or do they not want to spend the money if there's a cost associated with the, uh, decision or the option? So what are they excited about? Um, in the focus groups that we heard with parents and community members, they were excited about foreign language at grade six, would be amazing. Um, if we keep them separate, I'm all in for it. Uh, what's important is what's on the inside, and that was a reference, uh, not to the condition of the building, but, um, how teachers build relationships with kids, really strong relationships with kids. And really, that's both here at East Meadow and at Granby Junior Senior High School. What were they concerned about in the focus groups? Would sixth grade be segregated enough? Is there enough room for fifth and for us to continue to grow? Comment that people were being selfish, on the flip side, zero reason to move it. Um, one parent attended Catholic school with one teacher, two classes, thirty students, and three subjects. I actually was in that focus group. It's nice for sixth graders to move away from fourth and fifth graders, but to a middle school, not a high school. And a concern about keeping a small-town atmosphere and keeping classes small. Um, and big ideas that kind of don't fall in the categories, is there a way to collaborate with McDuffie? And can we invest in people?
One thing that I don't see on here, but I think was mentioned, was, um, collaborating with the other, the preschools that we have in town. I know, I, I think I said that in my, in my focus group, just.
Okay.
As a way to look flipping preschool.
Yeah, so, the school committee, and it will be public, has the raw data. So what we tried to pull out were some themes, so if we missed some, I apologize. So if you look at the raw data, all of the raw data, I should go back. How we did it was we created a form for every focus group and every question. And as we went through, we typed answers, and that raw data is in a form, uh, for school committee. And that's public, um, and it will be posted, uh, with the minutes, um, as soon as the minutes are approved. So that's for all the data, the teacher surveys, uh, and the student data. So if we missed something, didn't find it in a theme, then I do apologize for that. Question four, um, interestingly, uh, we really didn't have any listed for keeping East Meadow pre-K through six. When we asked the specific, what's the benefit of it? Um, the challenges are large class size, we are currently maxed out, harder for teachers to meet students' needs, possible need for additional support for behavior challenges, means more money needed. Smaller classes are preferred, would like to keep small-town atmosphere and keep classes small. The staff is already working so hard, it's horrible to have that many students in a classroom. Sun is currently in grade six, classes of twenty-five, and teachers seem to be struggling. And it's not feasible to have that many in a classroom, remember, it would mean about thirty kids in a class. Um, classes of thirty would be a detriment to learning. New ideas on this, um, special ed teacher can combine with a general ed teacher to free up classroom space. That's something we're looking at with the, um, architect. Pull students out for enrichment, uh, meet with grade five classes and enlist the extra classes. And then one floating classroom to accommodate the bubble. And I think Mr. Petrus did a nice job explaining, it's not a bubble, it's, you know, we are three classrooms. K through, uh, next year will be five, so. Questions and comments, how many students are actually in the classroom all day? I think that question is what some people were trying to get at, which is to clarify how we're using the building, where we might not be able to reach capacity because some of our classes are not, um, full at twenty, twenty-four K through two, or the twenty-fourth, three through six. So we're using classrooms a little differently. Um, feels like it would become a behavior school, students should be with their peers. Um, parents went to a school with twenty-five and thirty kids in a class, don't spend more money. And the amount of special education classes seems excessive. So, this was really interesting. Um, of all of the things that we discussed, what's the most important you, to you? What's best for the children and their education, and ultimately the town? This was the right way to go about it. And I like the superintendent's thinking in what she's saying, I had to put that up there. Most of what you said is about giving them better education. Um, do what's best for kids, everyone coming to the middle, we aren't gonna agree with everyone, compromise. Feeling more open to all the options now, no real major issues. We know a bunch of older students from church and basketball camp. It boils down to the cost of the townspeople. We need to do what's best for kids and what's best for the town. The town will never grow if we don't do what's best for the kids, and the kids get the best education they can. Next steps and more information, so basically that question, we tried to get it into some themes for you. So, big ideas was one, next steps and more information, what people are looking for, maybe put this on the website. Tours to high school are needed, ask the students, get information about grade seven students and parents about the transition. If grade six were to go over there, would there be consideration for a true middle school? It is, it is behavior and intangibles that are important, must be some way to ensure the safety of all this. Where the sixth graders are going is most important. Address concerns about moving them over and put out additional information regarding what grade six would look like over there. Show the cost for each option. What does teacher contract say about class size? Reach out to other professionals to take a look, have teachers been polled yet, keep them happy. Work in the profession, architects want to stand behind their design. And then get the numbers on how many students are in class all day, numbers may be more manageable. Current space considerations, relocation, relocate the space we already have. Reconfigure larger space for all the pullouts. Why do we need an extra conference room? Could a wall be taken down or used as a pullout space? We need more information on space utilization specifically in terms of pullouts. Pullouts to intervention classrooms, can we remodel the common space outside the pullout classes to make bigger classrooms? And then class size, uh, keeping two classes for grade four. I, I'm not sure whether that is, I take that as, that's a concern. Keeping class sizes smaller, having twenty-eight in a classroom, and then maintaining small class size. Keep the building as intended was a theme that came out of that question. I voted for a K-six, that's what the school should be used for. Initially, it was voted as a K-six, keep it that way. Keep this building for what it was meant for, at all costs, keep grade six here. Exposure to high school students is a concern, I believe in pre-K through six. Sixth grade does not mix at all with the high schoolers. Use the school for what it was supposed to be used for, if it has to, if it has to have larger class, so be it. And then considerations for the town as a category, the school wasn't a home run. Uh, do you think we could ever trust another town official? I believe the school was built, and I voted no. I come from a generation, if you cannot keep what was given to you, then you don't deserve more. The school should fix what they broke and not come to taxpayers. Um, our high school will close in a few years. Um, over the next three years, we'll have declining enrollment, and we don't want taxes to go up again. Not judging, I'm just putting out what was said. And then the impact of the decision was, uh, kind of two, uh, will bigger classrooms push people to private and/or school choice? And then modulators are the worst idea by far. So teacher feedback, um, really fell into the categories of, um, we did this a little differently. We asked right away for, uh, benefits, and then we had the question separate for challenges. So, um, it would provide for more space if we moved grade six to Granby Junior Senior High School. We could create the middle school feel, um, and that we could have alternative discipline. We would have a middle school discipline model as opposed to an elementary school discipline model. Uh, again, this is according to teachers, uh, and, and the feedback was that we had asked for teacher feedback. So, I can go through each of these, or I can just kind of give you the big buckets. Big buckets are okay? Okay. Again, this'll, the raw data will be up, and the presentation will be up. So I would encourage you to look at it because it's getting late. What are the potential challenges? Much like parents, there is a maturity level and exposure concern. There are logistics to setting up a new program in a middle school, and then addressing parent concerns. Definitely something that, uh, would be a challenge to moving grade six to Granby Junior Senior High School.
True.
Yes.
When you say teachers, is this specific?
This was East Meadow teachers.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and I have high school as well.
And it was paraprofessionals, it would be wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So when we asked the question, we asked also. Sorry. Getting ahead of myself. Teacher feedback. Need my own computer. Okay. Okay, East Meadow feedback. We've considered moving grade six, so this was grade six. Benefits, challenges. So we also asked a question a little bit more specific for teachers. What changes in physical space, programming, curriculum, and instruction or extracurricular activities might be needed? So specialists, band could do middle school six, eight, and high school separately. I'm not going to get into details, you can read. There would be some consideration of teacher certification. And just as an aside, I think that's how this conversation started prior to us presenting anything to school committee, because I will tell you, I had teachers come to me and say, if we run out of space, and if there's a decision for a change, would I have to change my licensure? So I had those conversations with teachers very openly, that if that were to pass, we would, we would talk about certification. And in my mind, that could have been one of the triggers that started this whole conversation, that we were already down this path of deciding, and that was, couldn't be further from the truth. But I had those conversations with teachers because they came to me concerned about looking at the potential and seeing shortage in classroom space, what, what could be that potential for them personally as a professional? So I did have those conversations, I believe, last year, at the end of the school year. But we hadn't even started at the leadership team level talking about solutions or options yet. Teacher certification, middle school sports. We would definitely need to look at potential for extracurricular programming there. Recession was a big issue for students, and teachers recognized it. And then enrichment, looking at ways to provide enrichment for a six, eight program. Now we get into the responses for preschool. We did ask teachers about moving preschool. It would definitely free up space. The interactions with older students could be a benefit. And if it was off-site, it could allow for more community interaction and involvement. Consideration and challenge would be a high startup cost, in terms of renovation, playground, things like that. Access to specialists, we've talked about that. The environment, the idea of preschool students being close to their siblings and removing that. That's something that teachers see on a regular basis, that interaction. And then East Meadow classrooms, we would have to reconfigure the whole school. So that came from the teachers. Now question six, which was just not doing anything and having the class size of thirty. No benefits, sounds nightmarish. One of the benefits is no one would have to move, there would be difficult access to specialists. The environment again, and East Meadow classrooms would have to be reorganized. Challenges, physical setup of the classroom and the ability to teach effectively. So teachers talked really a lot about, it's not effective to have thirty students in a classroom. As a matter of fact, when you go into twenty-five at grade six, it feels, they're big, they're big kids. And it does feel pretty cramped already. Okay, question eight. Please share any other thoughts you might have on East Meadow enrollment and facility's capacity. It's good to be growing, it's a positive thing. Sixth grade is the most logical option, it needs to be done right. And a quote, "At the end of the day, there are pros and cons to each choice. However, no matter what the final decision is, I truly believe if we continue, if we combined our strengths as teachers, parents, administrators, and community members, we can present and carry out this change in a positive, honest, respectful, and smooth way for our students." So teacher feedback from Granby Junior Senior High School. Question one, same question, we've considered moving grade six to Granby Junior Senior High School. What are the benefits? Again, more space, it alleviates the space issue. We can develop a middle school model, that comes out a lot from the teachers. The challenges, the themes we hear also, just like the parents. There's a maturity level and exposure issue, little kids being uncomfortable with high schoolers, those kinds of things. The bus comes up again as a, as an issue. And then the logistics of setting the school up to be a middle school. The logistics around schedule and things like that, and losing space at the high school is a concern. Changes, or for physical space, programming, curriculum, and instruction or extracurricular. Electives and activities, the high school teachers talked a lot about. And really, a lot about the programming that we could build. So things like science, fair club. And a lot of questions, logistics around lunches, and recess, and bands, and things like that. And then the physical space, treat the building like a blank slate and reconfigure the entire existing layout and programs. Moving pre-K to Granby Junior Senior High School, an alternate site. The high school teachers said, again, it frees up the space and allows East Meadow to remain a K-six. It does give interaction for older students with the pre-Ski, pre-K students. And already, our community service learners are placed at East Meadow and in these programs, so that would be an easy shift for them. The other site, it would be best to move it to another site, and alternate site would be more student and age-friendly. Cost, there is a cost thought from the teachers, the renovation for bathroom, toilet, sinks. Related service providers again come up as a theme. See kids at the classroom playground and individually. It is a nightmare for service delivery to try and organize OTPT speech for students when they're not in the same school as where the providers are providing all the other services. The physical environment, what space, only on one floor? Are they going to have access to a small playground? And then behaviors, we might not, again, want younger kids to see and hear older student behaviors. And they might be scared to be with big kids, was a concern of the teachers. So, what are we doing? Not doing too bad, students. Okay. So. Each year we prepare, so this is literally the student questions that we asked. Each year we prepare grade six students to transition to Granby Junior Senior High School for grade seven. Recently, we have been having some discussions about the possibility of moving grade six to Granby Junior Senior High School. Well, what are some positive benefits you see? And what could some of the challenges you, could there be? So this is a page of benefits. So grade five said, the start and end time could be a benefit. Increased programs and activities, and just some other things that kids talked about, like they could see their older brothers and sisters, and high school food is better, which you would expect to hear from a fifth grader. I want to be really clear about when we held the focus groups with fifth grade, we did not say, "It's going to be so exciting for you, you're going to have foreign language, you're going to have more specials." However, we did answer questions. They said, "Would we have lockers?" We said, "Yes, you would have lockers." If they said, "Would we have foreign language?", we said, "Potentially, yes, you could have foreign language." Would we have, so there was a little bit of give and take with kids. If they asked questions, we answered as best we could. Some we said we wouldn't know yet, but I don't want you to think that we went out and tried to get them all psyched up. They asked us questions about logistics, simple things, and recess is a good example. Would we have recess? Yes, we would organize your day so that there would be recess. So I think we were trying to balance any anxiety and any concern that they might have with some real information about what it could look like if it were to happen. So I know that, you know, I've heard that kids have gone home and said that, you know, the principal and the superintendent said, "This is going to be amazing." If that's their perception, then it was because they asked questions and we gave them answers to those questions. But we didn't solicit or go out and say, "This is going to be the best thing since life's bred." For grade six, they said it would be nice to go as a team with the fifth graders, there's a lot of them. So it would be, it would be good to go together. One thing that I found interesting was this idea that they would have more access to counselors. And I don't know how they know that, I don't know if they were talking to siblings or something, but they are concerned that sometimes here, they, they try to go to a counselor and they can't get to a counselor. Where up at the high school, there's a suite, and if they go, they're pretty much seen as needed. And then the sixth grader said it's, it's, it's worse for them than for us. So that was a question relative to the high school students. So. Okay. Let's see, did I do this? So continued benefits, they're ready to be pushed, they want to learn foreign language, they want to be in science labs. Challenges, teachers might be teaching us too much. You'd expect that from a fifth grader. Maybe they won't let you go to your locker if you forget something. Some of them were really sweet and really cute and really fun to hear. The benefits, they would have a scheduled break. They were really interested about the ten-minute break in the morning. I don't know how they know about that, but sixth graders were all over it. The challenges for sixth grade, no recess, would be different for them, it's harder for them if they have two teachers. So things like that from the student perspective.
Teachers mean six homeworks, right?
Six homeworks. That's, they did the math really quickly in the focus group, they were trying to figure out how much homework they were going to get. So do you see any challenges with after-school activities or sports? So the benefits were what you would expect from a fifth grader, they get to meet new people, they can be on school council, they can be in band, middle school sports. Challenges, walking to school on snowy days, I don't know, no judgment, we just put it in. And again, benefits for sixth graders, middle school activities, challenges, older kids may be a little more rough, especially in dodgeball. You gotta love them, I mean, you just can't even. They would be the youngest in the band, GAA, I thought this was interesting, GAA would lose players. And so they're very connected to the community, I thought that was interesting. And not time for homework if you stay at clubs. So, we did ask them the question about, the class size next year would go up to thirty. What do you see as opportunities for this option, is class size important to you? We can make more groups with people, maybe put two teachers in a classroom, thirty is okay. It's easier to work in groups and make friends. And then the challenges, there's a lot of talking, cramped crowded space, only twenty-six cubbies, it's chaotic, there's not enough materials, not as much one-to-one attention, teachers would feel stressed. And then hard to focus, too much noise, you have to buy a lot more desks, teachers might be like, "I'm done." They were really thoughtful about the teachers. They really were like adamant that, "My teacher works really hard, and they're going to have to work harder at home because they're going to have all of this more work to correct." And so they were really thoughtful. So whoever has fifth and sixth grade students, like kudos, because they were just really sweet and very thoughtful. You know, and as they get to seventh through twelfth, they get a little more myopic, they're a little bit about themselves. And we'll see that in a little bit.
So, so the, so the desk size of it, the instructor would have to be smaller too, right?
Yeah, teacher's desk would need to be smaller, yeah. Like they were figuring it out, like, "If I'm going to get thirty bodies in here, like, something's got to go." Those were your civil engineers right there. Yep. Yep. More talking means more headaches, I thought that was funny. Answers, if you were given a choice last year to stay here or go to Granby Junior Senior High School this year for sixth grade, what do you think you would have preferred? Attend grade six at Granby Junior Senior High School, undecided, could see the good and bad with both, attend grade six. I would stay, and twelve would have wanted to go there. Fifty-fifty, stay and go. And then I had a group that four, it wasn't unanimous, so four would say they would have stayed, and nine said that they would have gone. So, student feedback at Granby Junior Senior High School. Benefits, we talked to seventh graders about the benefits of bringing sixth grade to Granby Junior Senior High School. Lunch, the food is better here, that's always a discussion with the kids. We have more freedom, lockers versus cramped desks, you know, typical things you would think of for seventh graders. Challenges, it could be overcrowded, sixth grade is going to take up a lot of space, the halls might be crowded, lockers are challenging. So some things like that. Benefits for activities, clubs or sports, some clubs could have more people, there could be new clubs. They could meet new people in sports and clubs. And the challenges, there was quite a discussion about JV and varsity and practice times and prepare for new freedoms, so sixth grade won't have as much opportunity to play because they're so young, so can read those on your own. How is your experience? This is a question we asked, how has your experience been so far at Granby Junior Senior High School? So, good, much better than last year, there's freedom, encouraging teachers. It's better here than in East Meadow. I like the teachers, they push us to think more, we have breaks and freedom. Challenges, the eighth graders call us names, and when we asked, "What does that mean?", they're called Sevys. So, I don't like that when the eighth graders do that. But the hallways are crowded, upperclassmen just move to class and don't always see us. We do hear some swearing in the halls, they call us short. Upperclassmen don't really talk to us, but they do look at us weird.
I'm going to excuse myself.
Yes.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you, Marcus. We did ask them about preschool. Because they would be students that would be receiving and welcoming preschools, so they, the benefits were they could help, there's daycare training, they're only here for half the day, they don't need much stuff. And the challenges, they're so small, we might not have them over. Hard for them to focus, they can't start at seven-thirty, it's too early. Older kids' language near preschool might be an issue, they need a lot of room and staff. Contradiction there, but a half-day program could be a distraction. So, they're pretty thoughtful. Benefits. This is grade eight. So grade eight feedback, benefits of grade six moving into the high school. I think they should come over because it's populated, I think some kids are nervous to share bathrooms, it didn't bother me. Sometimes the Sevys get picked on. Challenges, the hallways are crowded now. Attitude changes, too cool, too cool for school. That shift happens usually during middle school. The benefit to how you feel are the activities prepared you to transition? If so, which ones? Our eighth grader said, orientation gets you used to the high school classrooms, the schedule, transition. Run students through the entire day, we got paired up with a seventh grader, ice cream social was good. We got to meet a whole bunch of new people. And they didn't really list any challenges about seventh grade orientation and step-up day. Do you see any school activities, challenges? They didn't list any benefits. A couple of challenges would again be GAA, and would dances be six-nine? Moving preschool, the grade eight said the high school students can work with preschool, preschool can have their own schedule. And some of the challenges, they're too young to be here, having little kids would be difficult because they could be exposed to it. So for grade nine. I don't think older students should, I don't think older students would target sixth graders. The classrooms at East Meadow, I think is, aren't big. Students would be more comfortable with schools so they are prepared as high schoolers. Some of the challenges, a lot of chaos with more kids, who would teach them? It would be more rowdy, it would be middle school and a high school, bus rides again, sports. Some challenges, they really talked about in grades nine and ten, and even eleven, twelve. The big idea was, in a nutshell, we don't want to change our behavior because we've got sixth grade here. So they recognized that their behavior is a little questionable. It was really more of like a territorial thing, like, we kind of want them on our turf. So that was really the major theme when we talked to the older kids. How has your experience been? So we did talk about how their experiences have been. They are academically well-prepared, seniors with freshmen, and they are good to one another. Seventh graders playing JV or varsity hasn't been an issue. Some of the challenges is there's too much homework, make sure the teachers hear that, Mr. Sullivan. They want to see their friends more, and there is foul language in the hallways. Do you see any benefits with school activities? Again, soccer, sports. One kid said, he didn't even know we had clubs, when I was in my group. So having really young kids on sports teams, they may not see playing time, they may be cut. If they do make it, they would not get, they would get more experience. Challenges associated with moving preschool. Uh, the ninth and tenth graders said they think it's a better idea cuz it's only two rooms, you don't have to deal with buses, it's better for parents. Uh, and they wouldn't be changing classes so much and interacting with high schoolers. Uh, they could do community service, the students with the kids. Challenges, they are really young, it would be weird having them here, um, being late to class, I think, and bumping into the little ones. There would have to be a lot more rules in the building because the little ones are here, can you, it's like that territorial feel, like, they really don't want anybody in their space. And then, the bathrooms being a concern. Really, honestly, eleven through twelve is not much different, so, um, uh, I think I have to get into too much of that. So, that is all of the feedback, and it's only nine oh five. So. Any questions?
There's a lot here.
Yes.
I have one comment.
Yes.
On slide thirty-nine.
Yes.
Go back. It said, um, that was the one where we would talk about using the high school with a blank slate.
I don't have the numbers, so is it teacher feedback?
I don't even know who it was.
I think it's teacher feedback from the high school.
It's on physical space and says, treat building like a blank slate and reconfigure existing layout programs.
Yes.
And I haven't heard that as. Um, anyway, doesn't, it doesn't matter, but, um, treating building like a blank slate and reconfigure existing layout programs. I hadn't heard that as an option yet to consider doing that for East, East Meadow as a big idea. This is talking about just using the high school space and I get it, but I think it's a great idea as another way to look at.
Exactly. So, when the slide came up, I'm like, yeah.
Yep, so we are, and that's why the, um, we, when we reached out to the architect, and he's gonna do, uh, actually, they, Helen and Christian, uh, who just did the design, they're gonna walk through with us and look at the, the, um, current configuration and do exactly that.
There was also a discussion in our last focus group about getting a third party, you were in that group, about getting like a third-party architect in. Because someone that was here doing construction was like, an architect's gonna love what he made, he's not gonna wanna alter certain things. Whereas, another architect might come in and be like, yeah, you can totally do this, or totally do that, or.
It was like a third pi, third-party peer review of the, of the building, and the man that was talking about it, I believe he's actually an architect.
Yeah, that's what he said.
And so, he said, you know, I would do the same thing, every architect would do that, but, I think, you know, when you're talking about the blank slate, the way I read this, and apparently, I'm, I'm not getting the right feel for it, but I was thinking that that would be you guys, looking, the administration looking at the high school. And I think it would be good for you guys to maybe take a step back and look at East Meadow with a blank slate.
Sure.
You know?
Yep.
Take none of what we have here and look at the building and try again, it, it can't hurt to have new eyes. Going at it with new eyes, knowing what we've got, knowing what our numbers are, you know, just a different way to look at it. I'm not trying to be disagreeable, but it's another, it's another idea, right?
So, again, I, maybe I'm just like way out, but, I thought based on some of the things I read and some of the things we had talked about in the past, and then some of the things that we discussed here earlier, that you were gonna do that for this building too.
Yep.
Okay, I, that's, that's why I, I didn't see that listed anywhere for the East Meadow stuff, I was only reading this for the high school.
Uh, maybe, maybe it was me reading into it, something I wanted to see, but maybe to your point, I should've asked a question specifically to make sure we're doing it for you, not for.
And Cheryl, I just wanna thank you because I know this was a lot of work and a lot of time.
You're welcome.
And I think we're, I think we're on the right track.
Yes, I do too.
And I think we need to keep doing what we're doing, and I appreciate the fact that we were adjusting the timeline and, you know, making, I, I, I don't even know how to say what I wanna say, but, I appreciate the fact that we're, and I, the, the collective we, we're going out and doing this so that we sitting here on the school committee can make.
Yep. What's that? Also thank everyone out there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that goes without saying, I, you know, for everyone to come here, um, it's a lot, it's a lot to, to think about and to be, and know. I know, I don't wanna be making a decision that.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
People are gonna be hating, hating me down more.
Yep, yep.
Two things.
Yes.
Actually, three things. First, um, do we wanna have a talk about this now? To be honest with you, this is just like a whole big, long information that I really need to sit and digest a little bit before I start to come up with some things that I might wanna ask at some point. I don't know if we're better, I know next meeting is supposed to be one of our short business side, longer subcommittee side, but maybe we can look at that and maybe shave some time off the subcommittee side and, and spend a little bit of time at least having a talk about some of this after we have a chance to read it.
Well, it also gives us an, a chance to redefine how the building's being used more clearly, um, so that people have an understanding of, as I've said, the difference between total number of capacity versus how the grade levels are dispersed and programming is dispersed. Because that is, I think, one of the sticky wickets. Yes, you can have, you know, four hundred and thirty bodies in here, but if we have programming and classrooms being used with ten students, then that's why we aren't at capacity. So, I can explain that if I put a map up and actually write on it, this is grade six, this is how many students are in it, this is, you know, ABAs, um, this is how many students are in it, and then you'll get the total of how the population is dispersed in the building. So, I, I hope you'll see what the issue is, I think we can make that more clear for people.
So, a question on that, cuz I, I would love to see that, and I think it's, um, it would be fantastic. But at the same time, if we do that and we come up with a number, what I'm concerned about then is that we'll never know what our true capacity, what our number actually is. Because, like, so, I guess that's where my, you know, it is a sticky wicket, and, and I feel dumb because I'm sitting here and I ha, we have, we have these numbers floating around, and they don't really mean much to me right now because, to me, it's, it feels like it should be very black and white, and I understand, I truly understand that it's absolutely not black and white.
Yep.
But if our shade of gray means that our number is different, then our number is different, and we cannot have that other number out there because it adds to the confusion. But if we go through and we map out the spaces and we say our number is four-eleven, then we have people moving into town that are not school choice, that are residents, we've painted ourselves into a corner, it feels like, what are we gonna say? No, you cannot move in to thirty-four West Street if you have children because you, you know, like, it's a house that I know is on the market, like. So, we have to be very careful of how we put that, because if our building is rated by whatever the authority is that says we're at this number, then we have to be, we have to, don't we have to be careful then of what is that we're, we're saying? Because I appreciate our program, and it's part of what I love about what we're doing in our school and part of doing why I'm sitting in this chair. But I don't wanna say that our programming limits us from allowing people to move into town because we can't accommodate them.
I think that kind of boils back to, let's look at, let's make sure we look at what the space would be useful, because we can't necessarily say the, the capacity's four hundred and sixty people if we're using a room that's designed for twenty people just to put a special in that's gonna have twelve people. You can't say, well, if we have eight more kids in there, we'll be at capacity, cuz you might not have or have the need for eight more kids in there. But, is that the right-sized room being used for that space?
That's what, that's what I'm saying, is if we're using, if we have a room that we're using with twenty people and there's six people in there, then perhaps we need to, that's, goes back to the blank slate.
So, and again, you know, we can, we'll talk about this, but we're gonna get into civil rights, we're gonna get into, um, space. So, point-four classrooms can't be smaller than regular A classrooms just because student numbers in those programs are smaller. So, we'll get into some of the reasons why a full-sized classroom is designated for a specialized point-four program. So, I think we can give some more information to clarify what, why the decisions are made in certain programs. It doesn't mean that we're not open and flexible, um, to hear some ideas, um, but there are reasons why we've made decisions we've made, uh, for the building. So, to hear mismanagement hurts a little, but maybe it's just we don't understand and we haven't, we haven't shared with you clearly the reason why, um, we have these programs in classrooms we do. So, I appreciate it, um, the comments, and we'll go back to the drawing board and make sure that we're communicating clearly why we make the decisions we make, um, and see if there's potential, um, changes that we could, that wouldn't impact civil rights, that, you know, wouldn't have the opposite of civil rights and the federal government and Granby, you know, saying you are violating students' rights, um, here.
Just another thing, wouldn't, um, the, the amount of students in a building differ each year based on the student needs?
Yeah.
What their needs are each year?
Yeah.
I think, I think that's kind of where, where all kind of.
Yeah, but I mean, it's gonna fluctuate.
Yes.
It won't be a consistent number.
Right.
Because each grade, depending on how many people move into.
Right.
The town will make that number fluctuate.
I think what, you know, we've had the benefit of having some flexibility when we were West Street in East Meadow to allow for a bubble or allow for a larger grade two, let's say, and we had some extra classroom space. So, we never encountered this position we're in right now where the numbers of classrooms aren't available for the value of the community to keep three classrooms per grade level in grades K through three and then four through six, allowing that number to go up a little bit. But, um, you know, we've just never been in this position because we've always, as administrators, been able to manage the building. We've always had a space, we've always made an accommodation, now we're at the point where we're not seeing where we can do that. Um, so, that's why we're here. If we haven't communicated that clearly, we'll, we'll come back and communicate it again, um, so that we are clear, um, and, and maybe, like you said, maybe there's a potential solution we haven't considered.
I would also mention that, uh, the one, I know there might be other options that are gonna come up, but I think the, the one option that's been presented so far is the, the art music and really, the, the only one is the art room. You can't, you can't put kids in, a classroom of kids in that, in Mr. Wallace's music space, so that's.
Right.
So, art affects, it's gonna affect four hundred kids, it affects everybody here who takes art. So, it seems to me, at least right now, the idea of, unless the budget gets so bad you have to cut art and free up a room, I would, I would sort of put that right to back burner of trying to think moving an art room around.
I would too, and, um, the initial response from, um, the architects, uh, were in agreement with the absolute no modular, um, that those are typically temporary, they become permanent, they become difficult to manage and more expensive than thought. Um, and it wasn't a solution that, uh, any of the focus groups came out and were really positive about. So, I think that's one also that we could probably right off the bat say modulars isn't, um, anything that we would investigate any further.
There was a special ed teacher in our group too that, that I didn't see up there, that she had mentioned that do the special ed children just need services? Or do they physically need?
From preschool.
Yeah, from preschool, do they physically need the classroom environment? Or do we just have to offer services for them? Like, how, I didn't see that up there either, I thought that was a good point that she made, cuz it's something that I don't think, though, obviously.
Was there anything else? Alright, so, I think next steps, um, correct me if I'm wrong, um, we're gonna put this on the agenda again for next meeting to at least come up with what we wanna ask.
I think clarify feedback.
Yeah.
Provides more additional information, which is what tonight is about, um, and adjusting the timeline, I think is important.
And they're gonna have at least one high school tour.
Yes, two, we will do one at night, Stephen, we have to schedule that.
And then, um, you mentioned putting this out on, out within our, you know, our minutes. I'm also thinking, I don't know how hard it would be, but maybe, um, pointing out where it is on the main, uh, school webpage.
Okay.
Just for people who might go up the webpage.
You're talking to the webmaster, that would be no problem.
I don't, I don't know if it's, you know, a link or just saying.
We can put all the information that we're sharing, um, on the, um, East Meadow capacity. I don't know what to call it anymore. We don't like enrollment and capacity, um, we'll figure out something.
I just, I'm just really trying to make sure that what we have is, is, is out there in as many places as we can think of to put it so that people don't have to feel like they're searching too hard.
I think, so, um, they immediately reached out today, um, so, my hope is to schedule them either later this week or early next week. Yep.
Correct.
Yep. They've already sent sketches, so, based on, we sent them a floor plan, uh, it's not a floor plan, that's for your house, a, uh, map. Been a long day. Um, so, they've already started to look at, um, how we're using the building, they've already been asking some questions, so, the next step is for them to actually walk through and, and look at the spaces and, and see.
When does school choice get accepted, like, is that?
So, again, it's not a school choice issue, it's a resident enrollment issue. Um, school choice doesn't impact the number of classrooms per grade level. We have resident enrollment, as I've said, in kindergarten at fifty, um, we anticipate it being the same next year, given census and the students at Children's First. So, that automatically puts you at three kindergarten classrooms because you don't want kindergarten at twenty-five, it's a community value. You know, under twenty is what we're looking for, um, so, it doesn't, it, school choice doesn't impact the number of classrooms. It only impacts that we accept students into some of those classrooms where we have spaces, which is why we didn't accept them in sixth or fifth this year.
Or fourth.
Or fourth, cuz we were already at capacity.
We're, we're in the obligation to accept.
School choice completely frozen right now?
Just in those grade levels where we can't accept that much.
Entirely, though, I mean, that would help, right? We're talking census and numbers and.
Well, we're already at three classes, we're already at three classes, so, we're already at three classes.
Right.
We're not gonna drop below three classes, so, we're not gonna get enough school choice to go above three, so, we're just maintaining, we're just getting a few more in the three. So, three is a pretty constant for K one, two, three.
Yep.
So, I didn't see it up there, but is it a possibility to, to talk about condensing preschool back into the one classroom?
Yep, we've talked about that, yep, yep. So, it's always that, Granby is that really difficult size, right? So, our resident enrollment is twenty-five, we want the three, it's, that's, that's a cost factor, it's a resource allocation issue, how do you afford that? We do that with some school choice revenue, um, pre-K, again, we're, we're just at that number where we have services that were legally required to provide, and we can only have so many kids in that class, and we're at that place where we need two, we need three, and we're just always, you know, playing that, playing, we're just always, Granby is always at that edge. Or always right on that line.
I think we're.
Like, I'd love a hundred people to move back into town or bring their kids back from school choice, you know, when they're choicing out, those kinds of things, come back from McDuffie. We'd love to have you. Because that would make our lives really a little easier, um, when it's consistent and, and people are keeping their kids in Granby, they recognize the value that we provide to children, that we're committed to the resources, we're building programs, like, that's the kind of energy enthusiasm we wanna have out. That Granby is a great place to learn and grow.
Oh, absolutely. I don't want anyone to think this is just like here to complain and think the school's awful, everyone's here because they want to be, they want their kids in the school.
But I will say, you're hearing on Facebook that that's not the perception that people have. You're hearing that, um, they're, they're, they're trashing the schools again, they're bashing the schools again, here we are, back where we were. So, we, I think we really need to be careful that how we're sending our message is, is how it's perceived. Because I, while I agree with you, what you see on Facebook is not the same.
The same thing, I think it's all perception, unfortunately, is a lot of hearsay, even tonight's a lot of hearsay between everyone, so, absolutely, but, it's hard to.
Hard to control. Yep, yep. But the more we can stay positive, I think the more people can see that this is how we wanna model working through difficult discussions for our kids. Like, when they see us do this, they should be proud. And some of what we're seeing on Facebook, I'm not proud of, you know, it, it is not helpful, um, it doesn't push the, the knowledge, it doesn't push the conversation, it's hurtful. Um, my school choice families, I really feel for, there's some really nasty stuff about those kids and really nasty stuff about my special ed kids, and that's really frustrating.
Not necessarily.
No, absolutely.
Again, I really wanna be cognizant of.
Yes.
The, the student that's sitting over there waiting, trying, thinking she's got a special kid off in school tomorrow.
I'm, I'm, I'm writing her out of class.
I don't want them to be on my shoulders.
She's my excuse. She's my excuse.
Come on down.
You're up.
Is it time?
It's time.
Yeah, it's time.
Do you need my notebook, or is that?
I think, you sent it to me?
I sent it to you and Miss Sullivan.
In an email?
In a, sure, I'll share it with you, as like a presentation.
While she's on her way up, I'd like to make a comment. People in Granby need to know that this conversation back and forth between you and the school committee after visitors' comments is not allowed anyplace else.
Yeah.
You need to know that they are being as open and as honest with everything that's happening as they can be. Because if you were in Chickaby, Holyoke, Springfield, I don't, name the town, and you had, you sat in the audience and conversed back and forth, they would shut you off. You are not allowed anyplace else to have the kinds of conversations after school committee does visitors' comments as you did here.
Thanks, Ryan.
Just want you to know that.
Hi, everyone. So. I know we're all a little pride, but let's just like bear with me for two slides. I made two slides just because I knew that it would be forever. So, this is something that I am very privileged to be a part of as a student in Granby Junior Senior High School. Granby is very represented in the Regional Student Advisory Council, like, we have our own student advisory council in each of our schools, that is a part of the Regional Student Advisory Council. We currently have four delegates on the Regional Student Advisory Council in the, I think there's a group of thirty of us. No, there's gotta be, there's gotta be more. But we fill a big room in the West Springfield High School every other month, and we just kind of come together as like Western Mass, 'cause like when we, so, I can't talk about the Regional Student Advisory Council if I don't talk about the State Student Advisory Council. So, the State Student Advisory Council meets every off-month that the Regional Student Advisory Council meets at the Department of Education, like the actual Department of Education, like, I'm best friends with the security guard, like, we're like, we're really tight, I get him lunch sometimes, and so.
You're saying overboard.
I see, I know. And so, they, like, this is just a great, a great thing. And so, from the State Student Advisory Council, we have delegates from the regions. So, I was fortunate enough to be the regional chair of Western Mass, just like all Western Mass schools, all, all our group of us for the year, for the fiscal year, which was really exciting for me, I was like kinda building up. So, this is kind of what my, my council has been doing. So, again, like I said, if I can't talk about the Regional Student Advisory Council, I can't talk about the State Student Advisory Council. So, at the state meeting, we, they, like, I love, I love how DESI does this because they, they talk to us as people. Like, they don't talk to us as like the students that like, we're like, would you like to do this? Like, no, like, talk to us as like, what do you think about this? How would you, how do you think students in your area would respond? Because there's people from greater Boston, there's southeast, there's northeast, there's, we're all very like, like Wimmer Sack baby, like, we got it. So, we, so, the commissioner Riley actually spoke to us, which was really interesting to me, yeah. He's such a cool guy, like, I like, I don't know if y'all ever meet him, but he's like a really interesting man. He talked to us a lot about the holistic approach that he was trying to take with, within DESI, within the board. And just a quick note about the board, so, in every state, you have like your Department of Education, you have your Board of Education. Massachusetts is the only one, I've been corrected on this, so, it is the only one that has a student rep on their board as like a voting member. So, that, that man, that man, that man is also from Western Mass, his name is Matt Tibbetts, he's from Ludo High School. So, he is our voting member as a state, as like the state voting member, which is really interesting. So, he talked to us about the holistic approach, about how he wants the, the DESI to talk, to consider the student as a whole, and just like by using programs, foreign language, things like that, just like talking about the student as a whole, not our ratings, our, how our MCAS scores are, like, yes, that matters, but like, why are we getting these MCAS scores, things like that. So, when we have ESAC, we take projects for the year, we call them work groups. So, we have adults from different departments in DESI to come talk to us about what they, what DESI wants us to do for the year. Like, we don't have to adopt anything that they want us to, but they come to us and ask for our input, our, like, just what we wanna do. So, a man came down, I don't, I don't know names, I'm really bad at names, but one of the guys from Race and Equity came down, and he presented to us as a council of maybe like talking, like, he wanted us to understand about the educator diversification issue, about how our students are diverse, but our educators are not. And so, I know we have a couple of teachers of color, and he kinda like did the hand raising of like, have you had a teacher of color? Have like, and not, and like, it was, it was not an issue, but it was like interesting to see what they, what that showed, just as a hand raise. So, he really talked to us about educator diversification, and this became a state work group. Another, another student from Western Mass is a chair of this state work group, which at a later time, I, because it is the beginning of the year, this is just kind of what we adopted, and what was presented to us. So, at a later time, I can give you more information about what that, what that is consisting of for the year, what their plans are, what their goals are. So, and then the next presentation that was given to us was a vocal presentation. I worked in this work group last year with the vocal data that was given to eighth, tenth, eighth and tenth grade after their MCAS, as a survey about how they feel in their school environment, or do you feel safe, or do you feel engaged, yada, yada, yada. And so, that was given to us, it's a, it's really cool, 'cause we have state data and like kind of the trends from the state, but we also get individual school reports from the, from the data lady. And she, the data lady is actually the advisor for Wimmer Sack, are you sensing a theme? So, that's really interesting, and that was something that the regional people kind of adopted, so I'll get to that later. The other work group was a legislative work group for all of our political junkies, and this was my, this was my work group. We're organizing a lobby day, we're not really sure what we're doing yet, but we're just looking at the Promise Act, things that'll fix the, you guys can help me with this, but fix the formula for how schools.
That makes sense.
Foundation formula, yeah, yeah, okay. So, trying to fix that and see what's going on. And just 'cause the commissioner really likes the Promise Act, we really like the Promise Act, I think that's the act that I'm talking about. But again, I'd have to go back and see. But, so, yeah, that's kind of what we're doing. And then, Race and Equity became a work group, college and career readiness, this was something that was really, really important to the, to the council as, 'cause most of us, not most of us are seniors, but like, there's a big group of us that are seniors, and not that we don't feel ready for college and career, but there could be more done in schools as a, as a whole, in the state as a whole, in getting us ready, 'cause like, we don't know, we know what FAFSA is, we don't really know how to file it, we don't, we're just kind of, we're just all kind of confused, and it would be really helpful if we had like step-by-step, 'cause guidance is great, but maybe we need a little bit more. Global Outreach, I saw, I gotta stop moving my mouse. Global Outreach is a work group about having foreign language, having more than just Spanish, having more than, 'cause some schools require it, some there's two years, like, things like that, so like, they, I think they just want to have more of a rounded kind of education going on, instead of just, okay, you take Spanish, okay, you're done, like, what, what goes on in Spanish, things like that. And then, another thing that happened at the State Student Advisory Council, I think we were all kind of shocked about, was the, the State GSA came, and they like, they had their meeting the same day as us, so we kinda like had a little like playtime. And so, after we all got together and met up with the GSA, which is like, I don't know, like, I don't know if you guys have been to DESI, but there's like these big rooms, and it's not, it's like, got smaller because another state thing came in, and it was super crowded, and it was so awesome, because we got to meet all, everybody at once. And so, from, oh, I'm sorry, the State GSA, we broke up into regions, and we got to talk to their, like, the region people got to talk to us, and we could recruit them into our thing, and recruit us into theirs. And from the, from the State Student Advisory Council, which is like the council as a big, we got one of Wimmer Sacks people to be their, be like a coordination, person that talks in between.
Liaison.
Liaison between the SAC and the GSA, which is really cool. And then, so, now I could talk about my, my baby. So, our first meeting was this Friday, which is really exciting. I, I fell in love with Mentimeter, I don't know if you guys know what that is, but it's kind of, it's, it's like who, but not. So, I throw up a question on the board, and then people kind of go on their phones and be like, oh, like, my question was, how is the school year going so far for you? And you could go on your phone, and you could, you had to have five, five spaces to write whatever word you wanted, which was kind of like, huh, but it worked, and it was like, people, it came up on this big word cloud on the board. It was like stressful, like, it was like exciting, I'm like, I'm ready for the year, like, things like that. And I got to kind of check in with them on how they were feeling this school year, and kind of how the tone of the meeting would go, which was really cool. So, we, as, in the Wimmer Sack work group, we got to talk from the state, so each, at the state level, there's the work groups that we had, right, that I was, I kept talking about. Each chair of those work groups, chair and communication coordinator, was from Massachusetts, was from Western Mass, which was really, really cool. So, I got to have all of my babies that would go up and say, this is my work group that I'm working from at the state level, that I would like this council to adopt, this is why, this is why I'm passionate about it, I want you to be passionate about it too. And it got people like really excited, because this is the, this is the direct person from their work group going to the state and talking about issues that they care about as students, not as, hey, like, Emery, like, I'm really concerned about this, can you go tell other adults that like, in adult terms, like, no, like, I'm a kid, I'm coming up to you, and I'm telling you that this is my issue, and if you like it, okay. So, they, the vocal, we, we as a council chose to split up into two groups in the vocal work group, so we broke up into equity and guidance. Guidance, I'm not really sure what their goal is, but equity, they really wanna look at the equity aspect of the survey, and kind of, like, is it, like, when it comes to, 'cause it breaks up into demographics, it also breaks it into race, like, what did the African-American students answer, what did the Latino students answer, not, obviously not saying names, obviously not saying like, it does break up into grades, it breaks up into East Meadow versus middle school versus high school, which is really cool. And so, I'll be able to, as time goes on, be able to give you reports about that. And then, we also broke up into college and career readiness, because obviously this is an issue when it comes to senior year, and just maybe even junior year, talking about like what we're gonna do, just because like I know I'm nervous, and so is everybody else. And then, like I said again, plan for the year, what we're gonna do going forward. There are, there are goals, each, each council has goals, each, the state council has goals, regional council has goals, and each work group has goals. But I'll be able to elaborate more on those as the year goes on, and that's my side, love you.
Thank you.
Any questions for me at all?
How often do you think you're gonna come back to update us on these?
Every day, every, often. We have one meeting each month, so maybe like your second, it's usually during the beginning of the month. So, I'll be, I'll talk to you guys about when I can come back, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry about that, yeah.
Alright, I think we gotta go back to the substitute.
Who is our substitute coordinator?
Alright.
Gosh, how many hats does she wear?
As many as I don't want to.
That was a, that was very high energy.
Alright, I'll keep this short. It do, is it in there? You guys can get a slide. So, I believe you have it in your folder. Yep. Our leadership team, on behalf of the leadership team, we're presenting to you a sub proposal increase. I've been here now for three, four, five years, I came to track for eternity. And have been interviewing subs since I got here, it kinda became my thing. With some help with care, so, thank you. So, I've interviewed a lot of people, and I'm getting a lot of feedback, you know, while I'm interviewing these subs. And I hire for subs for secretary, prepare professionals for teachers, and they're awesome, they're great people. Sometimes we get retired teachers, sometimes we get fresh out of college students. We're here to propose an increase of the rate. The rate, the old rates are, they're pretty low, and they haven't been changed for quite some time. We're proposing an increase from sixty dollars to seventy-six fifty for a secretary. Most of the times we go without a secretary, because nobody will commit to coming in for that rate. We're proposing a sub par professional going from sixty-five to seventy-six fifty an hour. Sorry, twelve seventy-five an hour, seventy-six fifty total. A sub-teacher non-certified with bachelor's, we're going from seventy to eighty dollars. Sub-teacher certified with their masters from seventy-five to eighty-five. And I think on your paperwork, you might read it differently in that last column, it's supposed to read retired teachers with masters and a license at eighty-five. So, we did my homework, as Emery's going to ask if I did my homework. And we, and Jackie, followed up with some other districts, and I think Mike, you're looking at it right now, I can see that you've got that pulled up.
Yeah.
So, Beltratown, we're pretty much comparable to Beltratown. I will say, we do lose a lot of our substitutes to go to Beltratown and or South Hadley. We also do share them. So, I've had conversations with a lot of the secretaries at Beltratown, Hadley, Jackie spoke with Chickaby, Ludo, and we listed ours on there as well. So, you have the rates in front of you with, with our license and with the license, and we are at a point where we're losing people, and they won't commit to us. So, a lot of the prices that you see on that sheet included the minimum wage increase, that's gonna take effect July first, 2020. So, we built that in, so we don't have to be back here in January doing it again.
So, I, I mean, what I see here is that this really just puts us in line with, with a lot of the other communities around us, right? And I think now, what I need to ask is, the pay increase, if that mandates next year, are the other towns that are below us, they're gonna have to come up, right? Is that, is that kind of what I'm thinking?
You would have to buy a lot, right?
Okay, so, it really doesn't. I'm just not seeing that it's really that far out of line.
No, we're comfortable, and that's, I think, we're proposing what makes sense and what they exert. Again, we get a lot of teachers that are coming in that are licensed, and it's almost insult, right? When you get somebody to come in, they're covering, and they're implementing lesson plans, and doing, you know, we expect a lot from them. And they do a great job, and I hate to lose teachers to go to South Hadley, because they're paying ten dollars more for Beltratown. So, we do share a lot of those subs. You know, I reached out to one sub today, and she was like, oh, I'm already booked in South Hadley, and I'm like, man, okay, well, we want them to stay here. So, I think it's a reasonable ask, and.
We've got three subs removed their names from the list because of what we're paying them for.
Yep, that told us and gave us feedback that it's too low, and they won't commit to us.
Yeah, and if we wanna, if we wanna get the teachers we want, then I think, so, 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 my other question is to you, and I think you already know what it, what it is.
I already know.
This is gonna impact this.
So, just to clarify, it's January first that the rate goes up.
Yeah, I think.
Yes.
I was thinking summer.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, it's January first that that rate goes up, and yes, we can absorb the cost increase.
Okay, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, like, I don't see a final dollar amount, but I know that might be hard to predict right now, 'cause you never know what subs you may need for the year.
Yeah, we, we could apply a percentage or some, we could, I could certainly get you a number, but it is tough. I mean, it's tough to project how many absent teachers we're gonna have over the next eight, seven or eight months. But it's something that we can absorb.
So, I was gonna ask the same question.
I know, you're so mad now.
What you said. I'm assuming we had a projection already in our.
Yes, yeah, well, 'cause we have, yeah, yep.
I'm assuming it was based on
Yes.
numbers.
Hmm.
If we project increase on that one, do we know what that increases?
I can get it for you.
Okay.
Yep, certainly.
So, would this be, if we vote on this, would this be immediate then? Like, would be, would you be able to call these people that just removed their, say, hey, we just, happy payday?
We hope that it would be immediate.
Yeah.
Well, it would certainly help us, I mean, you got a lot of bodies, a lot of, you know, people that we need to cover for. So, between both schools.
Right, right.
When I was speaking, I was talking about district-wide, there's days you go without subs, you know, and it's a lot on the teachers that are in the building, you know, to cover for one another.
And I'm assuming you need to vote on this, right?
Oh, I think we have to.
I will make a motion to increase the sub, substitute rates. I will make a motion to increase the sub, substitute rates, uh, as shared on the presentation. Do you want me to, should I go line by line and, maybe, maybe that's the safest thing, right?
Yes.
Alright, let's do that. Uh, do you mind if I make a single?
We don't have to vote on one, right?
Motion instead of.
No, single is fine.
Okay, so I make a motion to, uh, raise the secretary substitute rate from sixty dollars to seventy-six fifty daily. Uh, sub paraprofessional, um, raise from sixty-five dollars to seventy-six fifty daily. Sub teacher non-certified bachelor's from seventy dollars to eighty dollars daily. Sub teacher certified, uh, with masters from seventy-five dollars to eighty-five dollars daily. And retired masters with teaching license, uh, will be set at eighty-five dollars.
Go here a second.
Second.
Anybody wanna say anything else or discuss this any further? Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi, and all opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, to be honest with you, I think, I don't think I wanna talk about goals.
I don't wanna talk about goals either.
We can, yeah, we can put that, uh, maybe, maybe for not the next thing, the meeting after, alright.
Yeah.
I do wanna talk about chart wells a little bit.
Chart wells is good news.
Yeah.
For real?
That's, that's on the stock.
Um, so actually tomorrow I'm meeting with Ken, um, that, that'll be our first of our monthly, um, meetings. Um, a couple of things we're gonna go over, we are going to, um, propose increases to lunch prices or talk about what that proposal would look like. Um, I'm gonna get them on the agenda for the second November meeting, or do you wanna have it on that first November meeting?
Is the chart well thing?
The first November meeting is gonna be full, because we break out subcommittees, so I'd rather do it on the second meeting, and maybe look at what else we need to do on that meeting.
Okay.
I think we have a few other things that are gonna come up too, like, um, I think we have to vote on, or at least we have to talk about the other, you know, the other schools, we have to be at some point, I think that's November.
So our next meeting this month is going to be our subcommittees, but it's gonna be abbreviated, correct, because of the sixth grade?
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah, so then we go to the.
So then our first meeting in November is back to our normal, so do you want them at that meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a sixth grade discussion, but it is.
I was very careful on choosing my words, but I figured everyone would know what I was talking about, but yes.
One thing I'm gonna need to know, at that meeting, we gotta get to the bottom of this.
Mm-hmm.
Why is the school, why is the lunch food better at the high school than it is at East Meadow?
Well, yeah, that's a, that's an excellent point.
It always is, though.
Yes, um, so to that, the, um, September revenue, um, it had, is greater this September compared to last year, compared to the year before. Um, so the year before, I think we were in the red about thirteen thousand, last year we were in the red about thirty-six, and then this year it's a little over. Thir- no, dark, sorry, three thousand six hundred.
Okay.
This year, um, it's a little over fifteen hundred that were in the red, so they're, they're certainly doing things that are, um, that are helping out, could be the better food.
Within more days, though, within more days, right?
Um.
You gotta compare the days, no?
Not compared to last year.
Actually, our half-day still, some of them included lunch.
Yeah, so that's something else that we do, yeah, so we have lunch on half-days, yeah, in the past we didn't, yep.
Right, so I remember starting late, even though it's a half-day.
Yep, we make up some of those deals, mm?
So that's, that's important, because the hard bit, the issue's always been they dig such a big hole at the beginning of the year, it takes the rest of the year to kinda dig out, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And, and breakfast too, right?
Yeah, so breakfast is every day, yep, and then half-days, we do get breakfast and lunch in there.
And were we doing breakfast two years ago?
Y- yes, two years ago, yes.
Does this have anything to do with the fact that we started with clean zero, at the beginning of the year?
No, that's just, no, that's to- totally separate, no, no, just totally separate, it's just.
Our run rate is a lot better.
Yes, yep, mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and again, it's, it's a bunch of different variables, staffing, um, could be insurance rates are less, I mean, it's a whole, a, a lot goes into that number. But at the end, it's less than it was last year, and even less than it was the year before. Um, so they are, they are doing good things, and I'll let them obviously speak to that next month when, when they're here. Um, so I'll meet with them tomorrow and we'll have, um, we're gonna discuss, they did one survey last year, I think we're gonna talk about maybe, definitely two, maybe a third survey. Um, on maybe why the food's better at the high school compared to here. Um, we made some progress last year with them, but I'm, there's still some, some work to be done, so, um, we're gonna start that tomorrow, and then, again, they can present on that first meeting in November, and we can, we'll go from there.
Okay. I wonder if it's because Isaac's been buying an extra bag of chips. I saw that when I looked it up, like you're, you're, I don't know.
That's the increase in revenue.
Must be it.
Yeah.
Alright, so does anybody have anything else they wanna ask about this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Standard reports, um, I think there's, uh, the super, the superintendent.
They do. So, um, it's been a very busy few weeks, um, I was able to attend the joint MASC, MAS, meeting of the superintendent roundtable to hear from Glenn Kuchar. Who is the president of MASC, and Tom Scott, who's the president of MAS, that's the school committee leadership group and the superintendent leadership group. Um, and we heard about the legislative updates for this year, including very exciting news about the passage of the Student Opportunity Act, which is, um, the next version of the Promise Act. Uh, which includes some of our feedback, uh, from some of the smaller districts, um, some of the districts that won't receive quite as much funding because of our, um, demographic. Uh, we're not, uh, as large free and reduced lunch or EL, uh, population, so, uh, we advocated and there is some additional money in the Student Opportunity Act. Not a lot, but a little bit, step in the right direction, there's also in the Student Opportunity Act, which you will all like to know about, um, is money set aside to study rural schools. Um, and the expense of rural schools, small schools, um, and how, uh, the chapter seventy funding formula really, um, puts small and rural schools at a disadvantage. Uh, because the expenses to run small and rural schools is more, uh, than suburban and, uh, some of the urban districts. So, um, there's some research money in there, um, and the Rural Schools Coalition is organizing and working, um, uh, with some groups to, um, do more research. And hopefully impact legislation and funding, uh, down the road. Emery, you will be happy to know we implemented the huddle at our leadership team meeting, there's a picture there, we're so excited. Um, thank you very much, all kidding aside, it was a great training, we're very excited, and Emery's gonna come back and, um, uh, do some more training on problem solving, um, problem solutions, so we're very excited about that. Um, using the lean framework, um, or bits of the lean framework, and really, um, broadening our horizons as a leadership team. Uh, we are looking forward to more huddles and more training, and truly we are, as long as they're hands-on, that's what I was told to say. Uh, we're looking forward, oh, I did that, okay, it's wonderful to see so many classrooms using mindfulness self-care breaks, so this picture, um, of the first grade classroom. Uh, Mr. Latoya and I have done learning walks, um, ever since we've started, but this one in particular was a transition movement, uh, from students working at their desks to the carpet. Um, and trying to get ready for a really exciting apple experiment, and they were like beside themselves, they, like, just imagine first graders wanting to know what's in this apple, and they're so excited. And they just couldn't get it together, um, and the teacher did a very short thirty-second mindfulness break, where they took a deep breath, thirty seconds, and they were all calm, it was amazing to watch. And then they were all present, uh, for moving into the science experiment to find out what was inside the apples. So it's really exciting to see that professional development have an active impact in instruction in classrooms. Um, thank you to, um, uh, let's see, Andrew Hutchinson, who was our Eagle Scout, who created these wonderful picnic tables for us, we, I should scroll up there, but. Um, that's a picture on the left-hand side of, uh, students using those, uh, wonderful picnic tables and eating outside, that's a great thing to see. And then I had to include the new photo finally, of the school committee with everyone, um, wearing their, their Granby gear, um, and that is now on our website, Granby garb. Um, and, uh, so, there we are. Excellent, that's my update.
What was inside the apple? Now, now you got me curious.
Seeds.
Seeds?
Yeah. So then they learned afterwards, some of the student comments was like, it's really hard to eat an apple with no front teeth, and it was, it was really.
I thought they were like, like a, like a fake apple or something.
No, no, it was legit, there were like two apples, and actually, once they cut them open, I think the experiment was one they were gonna leave out in the air, and one they were gonna like. Put in soil or a baggie with water, and I don't know, but I'll have to go back and ask, um, the teacher.
April John.
April, yeah, um, what's going on, so, they were so excited, it was just, they were just too cute for us.
Uh, the business, do you have another update first, or?
Um, yeah, so, um, couple of things, one, I'm working on finishing up, uh, FY nineteen. The reports usually due ten-one, we got an extension to next Friday, which is the eighteenth, because of the vacant opening in our accounts payable department, um, so I reached out to the state, they were fine with that. Um, I have everything that I need from Chris from the townside, I've been working on it, so that's due, um, next Friday, and then I'll report out on that, obviously, once that's submitted. Um, FY twenty, well, I'll start to run reports for November, the first two months are kind of, um, don't give us much to go by, so I'll start those run, run reports in November. FY twenty-one, I've already started, um, the basic, uh, templates for building the budget, um, we've already done some salary projections, increases. Um, so a lot of that stuff will be taken care of in our first subcommittee meeting next month, I think it's next month, right? Yeah, November twenty-second, um, and obviously we'll, I'll give updates, or the committee will give updates as we, we go, um, through that. Our October one data will be certified probably by the end of the month, and really, once I have that, that'll give me everything I need to project what our chapter seventy funding will be, our foundation. Um, so, um, just waiting on that, there's a few projections now, but it's, it's kinda early, so I'll wait till David, um, certifies that, and we'll have a better idea of, of what we're looking at for revenue next year. Um, chart wells, we talked about, um, facilities, to be honest with you, um, our facilities department, certainly custodians, but John and Patrick, um, have stepped up from the summer until now. I think this place looks as good on the outside as it's been in the recent years, um, partly because we have dedicated staff, um, here now. Um, as well as things being done and, and fixed in the buildings, um, it, it's been really good to have our own staff here. I don't wanna say on call, but on call, um, throughout the day, I know they put in a lot of hours and they get a lot of requests to do stuff, and, and they've been great fulfilling those, um, those requests. So I just wanna tell them that, um, and, and I tell them that, I try to tell them that all the time, that, that we definitely appreciate the work that they're doing. Um, boilers, um, that's for another time, but, um, we had some major work that was done, um, prior to completing that major work, some additional work. Was, or some additional problems were found that required some additional work, um, so we're working with the vendor now to get an invoice, I'm gonna, um, hopefully forward that to the town to see if they can, um, pay for some of those or offset the cost to us. Cause we did not have a lot of that stuff in the budget, um, and.
So what happened to the fourteen thousand?
That was approved, that's good, yep.
So this is in addition?
Yeah, so this is an additional, these are additional, um, problems or potential problems that were discovered by doing the work that we had already known that we had to do. Um, the boilers are outdated, they're aged, um.
So these are the ones at the high school?
They're at the high school, yeah, yes, mm, yes, um, so when we talk about capital, that'll be kind of a bigger discussion, we can get into more detail, but, um, that's where we're at with that, I just wanna give you an update, cause we had some pretty major work done to that. Um, that is about it.
Any questions?
So, it's a quick note, thank you for recognizing the work that our facilities.
Yeah, they're doing awesome, they're, they're doing awesome.
Uh, but we need to do more than just recognizing them here.
Mm-hmm.
Cause what we heard in some of the, uh, focus groups was, and you had it in, on your slides. Folks are really, um, remembering the old days and they're tired of hearing that we're not maintaining certain things, or, I mean, it's, it's anywhere in town, right? So to make sure that they hear about how we are trying to be good stewards of what the schools have, and we're trying to keep them even better, in better condition.
Mm-hmm.
Is gonna be important, so it's probably something that we need to do with the community relations subcommittee, and make sure that, uh, everybody hears about those.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, just the way the, our facilities department was coordinated the last few years, a lot of preventative maintenance was kind of, I don't wanna say overlooked, but we didn't have the capacity to, to do it. Where now we, we do, we have a, a chance, like the boilers, you know.
Yeah.
They're a perfect example, in the past, the way we were structured, we would just do whatever we could just to fix them, instead of kinda going above and beyond to prevent further things from happening, so, um. There's still a lot of work to be done, obviously, um, but we're, we're on the right track with, you know, getting ahead of things and, and going in the right direction.
Thanks, Adam.
Mm-hmm.
If you're interested to have more discussions at some point about, uh, what you were talking about, the, the, the last one about more registers and the, uh, or more zones within the high school. Would make it more efficient, rather than just the, the few zones that they have, like trying to pump.
For heating, yeah, so again, that's a, that's a very large discussion, um, but, yes, the, the simple, again, the talk in the past has been new boilers would solve that, uh, it would probably solve a lot of it. I think the, the boilers, as they stand now, are, are original to the building, they're not very efficient, yeah, um, but yes, just looking at in general, tempering the. Heat and or cold in this building, um, i- it's a larger discussion.
We can get money for them on Antique Roadshow or something.
Yes, yeah, yes, um, but yeah, so, so, again, those discussions will be coming up, especially as we get into the, into the budget talks.
Okay. Anything else? And now to our favorite CES folks, did you have a meeting, uh?
Yes, I had a meeting on September twenty-fifth, um, we discussed, we.
Can you tell everyone what CES?
The Collaborative for, uh, Educational Services. And we were up in Greenfield. Um, discussed, uh, this year's plans, the three strategic goals that they have, and implementing them, and providing, um, educational services for the teachers. For like online and also in classroom, I think they're going more towards the online training. I just received an email this evening from, um, Bill Deal, who is the director. Um, they want to admit two other schools into the, uh, collaborative, that would be Gateway Regional and Worthington, and he would like to. Possibly come and talk to us, um, about what the agenda is, and I'm gonna put this in the folder, so that we can read the preamble, and what is required for our voting.
Should, should we, um, like I don't, yeah, cause I don't know the timeline on that, and I'm, I don't know if we should try to schedule that in for the next meeting, cause I know the meeting after that, Jamie mentioned that you.
He didn't say, cause I'm looking at this.
I just wanna make sure that we schedule that around, but.
This is the email, I didn't see a date on here.
So, so can we find out, like, when they need to have that done by, so we can make sure we, we have it on our agenda, you know, in time?
Okay.
I'm not sure there is a timeline.
Yeah, he didn't, I think it's.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see a timeline on here. Oh, by tw- he wants it finalized by twenty twenty.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be done in November, we could move that, or the first week of November, we can move that into December if we had to.
I can, uh, email.
January, yeah, by the end of January.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was fully finalized.
So I'm gonna put this all on, cause his board of directors, uh, report, so I'll attach it into the school committee. So I'll attach it into the school committee. And then there's two documents here that we have to read before we sign or agree.
Does each committee of the collaborative have to agree to accept them?
Yeah, so it has to be a two-thirds majority.
So we wait to see how everybody else votes.
Yeah.
You're the outlier.
Yeah, you're the...
I actually started talking about that, uh, in the spring of last year.
Yeah, there's a process, so the stu, those, the two schools came forward and asked, and they have to go through a whole process before we can actually vote on it.
Okay. Um, West Street, the building committee, I don't know if they...
To be very honest, I don't know that there will be a West Street building committee meeting anymore. That's, that sounds, right?
I think we missed our opportunities. No one seems to wanna meet.
Well, aside from that, I mean, we, we did request, uh, on a couple of occasions. Uh, I think because we're beyond warranty now, uh, it is assumed to be a walk-through and sign-off, uh, process and not necessarily requiring any decision from the school building committee. You're right, just, you know, it's, it's...
But it would be also important for other members of the committee, 'cause a lot of people out there do not know about the issues going on within this building space, and yet, they should be aware of these issues.
Right.
Before hearing about them. So, that's my take on it.
Yeah.
So do we, I guess we come back to this, but the other thing is, do we leave this on the agenda or...
I think we should until it's, it's, it's dissolved, uh, because it's, uh, it's still a committee. I mean, we, we got sworn in again, uh, in May or whenever that was.
Yeah, we're on it till next June, so...
Yeah.
Should we invite them to a meeting so that they can hear some of the, the discussion and, you know, like, is that what you're talking about? What, what's...
I'm not sure who them is, that's, that's the issue, I think.
Who else is on the committee?
Is it just the two of you?
No, everyone.
That would've been fabulous.
There's the town, there's the town manager, you know, town administrative assistant is on it. Mark Vale, uh, Joe Rakowski, Jim, uh...
Over here, yeah.
You know, Jim Morrissey, an architect, was on it.
Yeah.
Other parents who are still on it, so obviously, we should touch base, so they should be aware of these. So we could even revisit these space issues and so on. That is a, it's been an issue. It's been an issue raised here, so, um, so that's, that's our...
I was at a meeting last night and I can tell you that, I don't know when they released the video or whatever, but the town administrator did say that he was not happy that fingers are being pointed and saying that, you know, it was a town problem, that they didn't build the, you know, the school big enough.
Yeah, so just more of a reason that this committee should meet.
Right.
Put the issue to rest, you know? Or have discussion about it, and so it doesn't, just doesn't perseverate, and people were talking about this a year from now.
But here's, here's a point. I, I mean, he's making a good point. I, I agree with what he said, if, you know, that's, that's what it was. What you're saying is it would be good to have the group together so that folks can hear from the complete committee, the full committee.
Right, I think it's just, it's good practice, I think. 'Cause we've been appointed to the committee, so I kinda think, why do they get appointed to the committee for when no one wants to meet as a committee? Just an emergency, you know, this, not this is an emergency, but this is something that should be talked about, that should dovetail into what we're dealing with and what the parents have issues with. They've been revisiting these things in detail, you know? So obviously, it should, uh, we as a committee should revisit it since we're still a sitting committee. But then it becomes who's gonna call it, you know?
That's why...
Chairman doesn't seem to wanna call it, so obviously, who, does the vice chair, does, I don't know who calls a meeting and get people there.
I don't know that there is a vice chair right now. We, I, I think any member can call a meeting. I don't know if we're gonna have a quorum to be able to do anything.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, why can't we invite, I mean, if we invite the committee as a whole for a specific date, isn't that sort of a backend way of calling a meeting?
Well, they would have to post.
They would have to post, and we would have to post it. I think it would make sense that we should meet as a committee first, the school building committee. Past one, meet first and then bring everybody up to date on what we know. And then if there's further meetings, and some people could surely come to one of our meetings here and, uh, add their comments or to-sense or whatever, or just put it to rest sometime, one way or another.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll leave it on. I guess, um, you guys will just continue to try to meet to close out some of these, these open items, right?
Okay.
Right, um, I think that was it. Do we have an executive session?
No. May I ask for a favor? Can we, can we remove that from our agenda? Unless we have executive sessions, because it seems to give the impression that we have executive sessions, uh, the last two times and we did not.
Right.
So if we should just take that out.
Sure, yeah, we can take it, although we will be, um, starting negotiations, uh, relatively soon, so...
Right, so then it can come back, but it, it sounds like it gave the wrong impression that we were, we were having executive sessions and we don't have executive sessions.
Thank you.
All right, um, I guess, uh...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Back again.
Can I have a favor?
All right.